This is February 2nd. The Committee of the Whole Meeting for District 96. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Murphy?
Here, sorry.
Mr. Marhol?
Here.
Mr. Barsati?
Present.
Mr. Muirhead?
Here.
Ms. Gunn?
Here.
Ms. Kleiber?
Here.
Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum.
All right. The first item is public comment. I have two emails for public comment. I can read them both. The first one is from Matt Johnson. And it's titled Teacher Led Instruction Versus Lexia/Dreambox in Class. And it goes, Hello, my name is Matt Johnson and I have three kids enrolled at Hollywood Elementary currently. We have amazing teachers here in D-96 and my wife and I feel very lucky to have found such a great district for our children. Teacher-led and/or guided instruction is the gold standard in which our students grow the most. Technological advances coupled with the pandemic have put school districts and teachers in a unique position in terms of what to do with virtual learning tools like Lexia and Dreambox. While these can be nice supplementary learning experiences, I do not believe they should be used when in class with teacher present. My ask is that the board coordinate with the teacher and administrative representatives from each school in the district and draft a policy on the use of these programs inside the classroom. My belief as a former teacher, parent, and taxpayer is that the use of these programs in class should be severely limited if permitted at all. Naturally, I leave it to the professionals of D-96 and the board to draft a policy that you all believe benefits our students to the fullest. I appreciate your attention and future actions in regard to this matter. Thank you. Signed, Matt Johnson. All right. And the second email I have is from Nicole Melodic. I will take adventure on that. My apologies if I did not pronounce that correctly. Our subject is public comments. And it reads, First, I'd like to acknowledge my appreciation for the wonderful and talented teachers and staff at D-96. I have a son in kindergarten and it is obvious how hard they work and how much the kids love their environment. In fact, today's remote learning started with a robust round of "We love you, Mrs. M." from several students in the class. I would like to voice my support for full-day kindergarten. Every day I see the gains my son is making and yet every day I see how much the teachers are packing into a shortened period of time. It seems there is never enough time to fit in the impressive academic curriculum, the critically important social-emotional work, the specials that our kids love, and the extracurriculars and programming that could really enhance their learning. My son was dismayed to find, for instance, that there is no Science Thursday as he had in preschool for weekly experiments. He would love to spend more time learning in class and engaging with his friends. We personally are supplementing without school occasionally DIY workbooks and learning apps and taking part in Park District STEAM programming. But I would so much rather this be built into his school day in a familiar place with educators who know our kids. There is so much more these kindergarteners can learn from their teachers and each other with an extended kindergarten day. Given the report that space is not an issue and the relatively affordable cost, I wholeheartedly support an option for full-day kindergarten and hope the board will support it for our kids as well. Thank you for your consideration. Nicole Melodic McNamara from Riverside. Okay, Kathy, are there any other public comment emails? Sorry Kathy, I didn't hear you.
Sorry?
Were there any additional public comments that came in?
No, just the two of them.
Okay. All right, was anyone in the waiting room for signing in as a participant?
I don't see anybody. Don, do you see anybody?
We have additional attendees than when we made the announcement about typing in the chat. So I guess I would say if any of the webinar attendees who are wishing to give public comment, please use the chat to to say so, so that we can call you for public comment. And there haven't been no additions to the chat.
Okay. Well then, at this time, we will move on. So the next item on the agenda, are there any proposed board member changes to the agenda? And if not, then we will move to board member comments. How did e-learning for everybody go today?
Worked.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, worked. Went pretty smooth, so that's all I can really say. We'll get through it.
I know that my younger kids were pretty excited about the novelty of it today and they had a lot of experience, obviously from last year, knowing how to run Zoom, so it all worked out well for them today. They both seemed to enjoy the time. I believe my wife actually sent our first grade teacher, Ms. Pinta, an email marveling at her patience for, at one point during the break, it was supposed to be a 15-minute break and all the first graders stayed around and she was a game to entertain them and keep them going. Keep everybody happy and smiling. So you know, kudos to her. Thanks to her for that. It was a pretty good day here in our house anyway.
I will say one thing that was kind of a pleasure was it was my daughter's special for music today and they were singing with Mr. Howes, which I know they don't always get to do depending on the COVID scenario. So that was really lovely to hear them singing because they didn't have their masks on and that was a little bonus of being at home, even though she'd rather be there, obviously, but it's neat to hear them, so.
Yeah, that is good. That's good.
Yeah, I just applaud our teachers and even the students for how quickly they're now able to pivot to this new normal world of remote learning. I mean, I'll overhear them. My daughter will be like, okay, I'm going to set up the breakout rooms now. She can come run my work meetings and just, you know, as a parent, as a working parent as well, thankful to the email communications the night prior, which has allowed me to, you know, make plans with my own team and boss, not having to watch the news the morning of. So I have appreciated that. So as good as could be expected, Dan. Yes.
Okay. So we will see how day two goes tomorrow.
Right, I was gonna say, Dan, and the email just went out to our community and to all of you. We are going to another day of e-learning tomorrow and I was sharing that this was a hard call to make, but there were some changes in the weather forecast just this evening and again, we feel it's the safest choice for our students and for our staff to have another day and it's certainly great to hear that it went well and that that there's even a factor of novelty, because as you know, by last spring or, you know, whenever we had our last pandemic, all e-learning days or many e-learning days, it started to feel kind of commonplace and maybe even frustrating some days. So I'm glad it felt kind of fresh and novel and a little bit fun today.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, we will keep moving down the agenda. Definitely a big agenda this evening. So we will move to committee reports. The first committee listed is the Education Committee. Sheri and Linda.
Well, you know, I don't want to say too much, Linda, because we obviously have a lot of people presenting today and we're thankful for the teachers and administrators that have come to talk about all-day kindergarten. So that's, I don't know if Linda has anything else to say, but that's really what we're here to hear about today. So thanks for all that could join us and all the hard work you did to prepare for your presentation. So we look forward to hearing it.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing us this time to share with you what we learned as a as the Full Day Kindergarten Action Team. The team, most, the majority of the team is here tonight. Some will be speaking, some are here to show support to the team. So if you would all like to go ahead and turn on your cameras. All right. All right, so as I said, we are very excited to be here tonight to share with you the work of the Strategic Plan Exploration of Full Day Kindergarten. We had a solid team of teachers representing special education classroom or kindergarten teachers, early learners, first-grade teachers, school psychologists, and our English language learners. So I just want to thank our committee members, Brittany Basic, Karen Basing, Rebecca Borges, Carolyn Dirianzo, Alicia Guavera, Tracy Highland, Brianna Kwasaborski, Renee Lebeg, Jennifer Maslowsky, Krista McPherson, Molly Kiros, Cara Cruz, Allison Sulida, and then Kazimera Gorman for joining me in leading this team, Principal of Life Park, and then myself on the team. So a great group of people who spent a number of hours looking at the research for both half-day and full-day kindergartens and we'll go ahead and start talking about that. So just a bit of background, on June 16th of 2021, District 96 Board of Education approved our five-year strategic plan. And within that five-year strategic plan, we have five goals. And goal one includes student, is about student growth and ensuring high levels of learning for all students. Within that goal, we have three strategies. We have opportunity and equity gaps, standards-based monitoring reporting, and the reason why we're here tonight, Exploration of Full Day Kindergarten Implementation.
Hello, everyone. Good evening, Board of Education. Wanted to give you a little bit of background on the committee. So the Exploration of Full Day Kindergarten, the committee was charged with a few things. We were looking to explore the research on the effectiveness of half-day and full-day programs. We were looking to explore a community feedback from a community survey, looking at the financial implications of full-day kindergarten occurring throughout the district, and then share any of our professional thoughts following the research and the financial implications. So as Dr. Dossos noted, the Exploration of Full Day Kindergarten was a part of a charge of our strategic plan and that strategic plan was formed of spring of last year and our committee, our Kindergarten Action Committee, was formed in October of the past year. When we were looking at our committee and who would be on that committee, we were looking at professionals within our district who were just personally interested in exploring the possibility of having full-day kindergarten. We were also looking at those individuals who have experienced the half-day program here in District 96, but then maybe possibly had worked in other districts where there was a full-day program implemented. And then finally, we were looking at professionals who had specific expertise in the experience with and in the knowledge of just children of this developmental age. And so early learner kindergarten and first-grade teachers joined us, and English language learning teachers, specialists, special education teachers, and a school psychologist. We met seven times from the fall of October, I'm sorry, October of '21 to the end of January. We reviewed numerous research articles, so we read and discussed a lot. The research articles span probably 30 years. So we were very cognizant of looking for articles that were factual and credible and that were more recent, as you know, some were going back into the early 90s. We were also looking at making sure that the articles that we read had balanced perspectives of looking at full-day kindergarten options and half-day programs and the benefits and the challenges of each one. We looked in our, as a committee, we also discussed the needs of each one of our elementary buildings with regards to facilities and personnel, just the structure and the processes of the day, how it works now with the half-day program and what things would change if there was a full-day kindergarten program within the school. We helped create the community survey and also then review the results and the feedback that the survey gave fired us. And as many of you know, the survey was open from the beginning of December and it closed in the beginning of January.
So when we looked at the half-day kindergarten research, what we found was that it was less about supporting a half-day program and more about arguments against full-day kindergarten. So when you look at some of the main points that we pulled out of the different research studies, you can see that it talks more about negative points about full-day kindergarten, but that was its way, the research's way of showing the benefit of a half-day versus a full-day program. So in the research, we saw common themes of attending six hours of school may not be appropriate for some five- and six-year-old children. There was mixed research about full-day kindergarten, socially-emotional developmental benefits. There were statements about long-term effects of full-day kindergarten still being studied and that some researchers have not found significant differences in the academic achievement of students in full-day and half-day programs, as well as a number of studies had stated that children may become overly tired in a full-day program.
So looking at the research in support of a full-day kindergarten program, the first article cited here from 2020 noted that in a full-day program, kindergartners exhibit more independence. They're more involved in classroom learning and discovery, more productive in their work, and seem to show more reflectiveness than their half-day peers. We also know that center-based and child-directed play, there's a lot of research to studying the benefits of that. But in this particular research article, it highlighted the vocabulary skills, showed advanced vocabulary skills of those students and just more positive approaches to their learning. In an article in 2016, in order, looking at achievements test scores, it noticed that students in full-day programs had higher math and reading achievement, and they also had greater language abilities as they emerged into the first-grade classrooms. This next bullet looks to at something that speaks to our present time and just knowing the experience of children in the past two years as we look through the COVID pandemic and hopefully are coming out of the COVID pandemic, that a full-day program would offer more opportunities for academic academic growth in terms of addressing the learning loss and then also in terms of the social-emotional struggles that many children may have faced as they navigated, you know, this uncertain time. Finally, in the last bullet, that's an Albuquerque study from Albuquerque that took place over the course of a school year. And it just followed a group of students who came into kindergarten and didn't possess the same early literacy or numeracy skills that you might see of a child typical of a child of that age. And what they noticed is that children in a full-day program made academic gains equivalent to 16 months, which is tremendous, compared to their half-day peers who grew about 5.4 months. And just continuing on with looking at disparities in academic readiness. So this came from an article Just Full Day Kindergarten: Reduced Achievement Gaps by Gibbs. And it looked at different subgroups. So in the bar graph that you see here, highlights for students from low-income households and compared to those with, from non-low-income households, white students versus non-white students and students of Hispanic descent compared to those who did not have Hispanic descent. And it's showing that the academic readiness has been reduced for students who are in full-day program and it's still very great for those that are highlighted in gray and those are the students that attended the half-day program. Continuing on with social-emotional, this first bullet point was mentioned earlier in the site, but it applies to social-emotional as well. So just looking at, you know, utilization of small group activities. We know that when teachers work with students in small groups, there's that sense of personalization in their learning, but there's also the opportunity for students to have peer modeling and peer interaction. We know that's great for all human beings, but it's particularly effective for young human beings. In noticing in full-day programs that school attendance was more consistent than in half-day programs. And on average, students' learning gains translated at least to two months of additional schooling when attending a full-day program. Students exhibit increased learning, classroom involvement, productivity, and work with peers. I'm sorry, that was the bullet that was mentioned earlier before. Obviously, that's, those are academic gains, but those are also, you know, those soft skills that we talk about in terms of independence and collaboration and fortitude and ability to reflect. Those are all skills that are not just wonderful for right now in life, but also our life skills that all human beings need. And then finally, the last bullet point connects back to more with small group activities. It's just the personalization of learning. It's just the opportunity for teachers to encourage and really understand and know their students and be able, so they can encourage them to continue to be curious, to stay engaged, to ask meaningful questions, and really just enhance their overall learning experience. Go to Jim Fitten, he's going to talk about the financial implications of full-day kindergarten in District 96.
This is a list of the first-year costs related to full-day kindergarten. We would need to add four full-time kindergarten teachers, about $44,000 in new furniture and the first year of supplies. Possibly a part-time midday assistant at each elementary school. So we're putting in four of them to make sure we're covered for that. And then at the bottom section there, we would add three full-time teacher specialists for art, B, and music. And I just want to mention that those special teachers are just because of full-day kindergarten. It's kind of, that's the one thing that pushes us over to needing them. But they will obviously not just work in the kindergarten.
So we also, as Kazimera said, Kazimera Gorman said, we released a community survey on Tuesday, December 7th, and closed that survey on Friday, January 7th. We were pleased with the response from the community regarding the survey. We received 793 responses. And then we had an open-ended question at the end of the survey that asked, is there anything else you would like to share regarding the potential implementation of a full-day kindergarten program? And also again, pleased to know that there were 389 responses to that open-ended question. And when those open-ended questions were, or comments were read through, they were placed in one of three categories, either support for full-day kindergarten, opposition for full-day kindergarten, or if they were a comment that was neutral, had no preference, or was just a comment that was about something related to kindergarten, but not necessarily whether or not there was a support for or against full-day kindergarten, they fell into that neutral, no-preference, other category. So as you can see, we had 283 comments that supported full-day kindergarten, 27 comments that opposed full-day kindergarten, and 79 comments that were neutral or had no preference or an other type of statement. And now I am pleased that four of our kindergarten teachers are here tonight to share with you what a potential full-day kindergarten schedule would look like and how it would work for a half-day program that we would have as well. If we move forward to full-day kindergarten, we would like to make it known that there would be a half-day option available should parents choose it. It would be part of the full-day program, so students would come in the morning and the teachers, our teachers, our wonderful teachers are going to talk more about that in detail now.
Hello, I'm Kristin McPherson. Just a little background on me. I teach kindergarten at Ames. I teach AM and PM. And this is my fifth year there. And then prior to that, I taught in Quincy, Illinois, and I taught full-day kindergarten there for three years. So I'll go through the beginning of our schedule. So we would arrive at 8:15, just like the rest of the school does. At 8:20 would be our calendar, weather, and SEL. And this is a time where a class comes together, gets a chance to settle in. We'll do our morning meetings. We'll get to greet each other. We'll learn each other's names. We'll do a share, so we'll get to share something fun. That's also good for their language. And then we'll do a morning message and talk about our schedule for the day. We'll do calendar where we talk about days of the week, and then we'll also do weather. And then that will also add on about 10 minutes extra from what we have now, so that really gives us the time to go through that full morning meeting. And at 8:40 will be math. This will look pretty similar to what we have now, but it will be a little bit longer time. And that part will go through the Common Core math skills and that will be a whole group lesson. And then at 9:20, we'll have specials or recess. And like Angela said, in the morning, if the kids leave in the afternoon, every kid will at least get one special. So we'll have PE one day, music, art, and library. The other day we'll have recess. And then phonics and handwriting will be at 9:50 and this again will be an extended amount of time from what we currently have. And this one on the left you can see is phonics. So for that, we work on letters and sounds and a lot of those foundational skills that they need as they begin reading and in the older grades. We also work on sight words and then handwriting is how to make the letters. So we do that in their handwriting journals. It might be with Play-Doh. We make them in the air. And then in this picture, they have the little building blocks and they learn how to build the letters with that.
My name is Karen Basing and I would like to talk to you about our reading, writing, guided reading, and second step part of the day. Just a little background about me, as I've been at Blithe Park for 11 years and I've been a half-day kindergarten teacher for the past 18 years. So I'd like to take the opportunity to share what a reading, writing, and guided reading literacy block would look like. And as you can see on the schedule, it would potentially be from 10:20 to either 11:05 or three days a week, it would go to 11:20. In kindergarten, we use the Benchmark Advanced Literacy Program. And this is a balanced literacy program. And so what that means is it covers reading, writing, phonics, speaking, and listening skills. So you can tell that there are many components to a balanced literacy block. The additional instructional time will allow us to teach a full literacy lesson as well as incorporate small, individualized group instructional time. During our instructional time, we teach learning to read through explicit phonics lessons, but also we use predictable charts, poems, sight word instruction in small group. We also enjoy reading books. We work on developing comprehension skills. And just to name a few of the things that we work on in kindergarten, we include making predictions, we compare and contrast characters and stories, and we also look for evidence in the text. Our extended literacy block will allow us ample time to really dig in deeper and really strengthen and develop those skills and strategies that good readers use. Writing is also a pillar in the Balanced Literacy Program. And during this time, we would work on extending our writing to include more of the writing process. This additional time would allow us to have a conference with each student and work on improving their writing skills as individual writers. And lastly, speaking and listening are the last two pillars and they round out and complete the Balanced Literacy Program. This extended time will give us a chance to focus on working on these important skills with our young learners. A favorite part of every kindergarten teacher's day is our guided reading time. This is where the real magic of reading comes alive. During this time, we get to meet with small groups of children. We work intentionally and directly with children at their own individual level. Also, science and social studies integrate beautifully in the kindergarten level. With a full-day program, we can extend the important concepts and again, dig deeper to gain better understanding of these real-world concepts. Two days a week, we can also incorporate direct instruction of our social-emotional program, which is second step. During this time, we work on developing active listening skills, social regulation skills, turn-taking, and problem-solving. With our extended day, we're allowed to practice these skills and apply them in authentic and real experiences. Then at 11:25, it would be the dismissal for those that are attending the half-day program. And for those attending the full-day program would move on to lunch and recess. This time provides a break, both physically and mentally, from the instruction and allows children to relax with a lunch and a chance to move around and play at recess before getting ready to join for an active afternoon.
Okay, hello, everyone. My name is Brianna Kwasaborski. I'm currently the kindergarten teacher at Hollywood Elementary School. It's my sixth-year teaching kindergarten. And I have in the past taught both full-day programs and the current half-day program over at Hollywood. I'd love to thank you all for letting us present and speak. We have really had such an awesome time working on this committee and collaborating together. And for the last half of this model schedule, And for the last half of this model schedule, we decided to incorporate some photographs from past classes to kind of help show the idea and what type of activities that we would incorporate into a full day schedule. And you'll see that lots of these photographs have kind of those little magical moments about kindergarten that we all love so much. You'll see children building and exploring together, problem solving, sparking their creativity and trying new things and taking risks. And in our current half day program, teachers work really, really hard to incorporate times for these magical moments, sometimes at an indoor recess, sometimes if we end a whole group lesson early. But we aren't getting a whole lot of time to incorporate a lot of this free and play based exploration. So this would be something that a possibility of a full day schedule would really allow us to incorporate more of. And so looking at that first part of the afternoon, it was important to us as a committee to provide a time for our young students to kind of have a time to rest and recharge after a busy time like lunch or recess. And so this would be a time to incorporate more of a calming sensory experience where each child could practice the calming strategies that we learned during those second step lessons and work on kind of refocusing their body after such a busy time. And this would also be a really great time for teachers to kind of check in individually with with students as well by going and sitting with them, reading with them, especially if we do notice students who are having a challenging day or a sensational day. It's, it would be nice to have some extra time to go and work on that one on one connection with them that we know is so important. And in the full day program, we would also love to provide more opportunities to incorporate science and social studies extension lessons. So in our current half day, as Karen mentioned, we really try our best to incorporate all of our science and social studies concepts into our current reading curriculum. And as she also mentioned, it's, it's a very whole balanced literacy block. And so it's really sometimes a puzzle to get all of those pieces in there. So to have a little bit of extra time with that is a great possibility. Especially since teachers were recently trained on the new defined STEM program, it would be beneficial to have a little bit more time to incorporate some project based learning that we've learned a lot of great new skills about. So incorporating these types of things into our animals unit, learning about weather and learning about plants are just some of the things that we would grow on in our kindergarten schedule. And then additionally, a full day kindergarten would provide some more extended time for students to work on some more academic centers around the room. So I think if you were to ask any of the kindergarten teachers or really any specialist or interventionist that works with kindergarten, what their number one wish would be, it would be more one on one time to really meet students at their level and really deepen their understanding on different skills, because we know not every student is the same. So that really small group time is important for them to grow those concepts. So not only is that working with teachers, like Karen mentioned, we could do both in the morning and in the afternoon, but working on different skills around the room that are differentiated at their own levels. Some students are still working on letters, some students are working on full sentences. So it would be a great time for that. And then on our kindergarten team, we also have a lot of interventionist and specialists who also mentioned that it would be awesome to have some extra time for them to come in and work with their students that they service to. And this could all be happening inside our, the classroom, all working together kind of independently, independently around the room. So it's little moments like these where we would find amazing learning to be happening and the possibility of a full day schedule would just incorporate some awesome time to add more of those.
Thanks so much, Bree. Hi, everyone, my name's Alicia Guavara. And I have been teaching at Ames just exactly for a year, just crossed the one year mark. And so pretty new to D ninety six, but not new to kindergarten or to teaching. So came from a few years in Michigan, teaching half day. And then I did five years teaching full day in Austin, Texas. And then have moved from there to here and just would love to wrap up the day as we talk about our schedule. So looking at that one fifty spot, thinking with just that, the whole day in mind, we really are keeping whole child in mind as well. So from there, we may have had a special and recess in the morning, but we probably would need one about this point in the day too, as we look at a little over an hour left of school. So taking that break, that recharge, I know whenever my kids even just run outside, even on the sidewalk, if it's cold or rainy, that resets their mind. And heading to specials is another chance for just another type of intelligence. We're going to do music or PE or art and gives them that chance in another setting. Along with whole child in mind, but something kind of new to the schedule is just a child centered or play based exploration. Maybe if we think traditional kindergarten, we might think of like, okay, go do free choice and the, so the house and playing house or the dolls or dollhouse or blocks and whatever they would, you know, generally do while teacher maybe sips a cup of coffee and checks her email. And instead of that, we are thinking more along the lines of that combination, social emotional learning with that play based exploration. So maybe if we're talking about cooperation this month, that we would have a little mini lesson prior to setting them spinning in their centers and be talking about how are we going to cooperate today? Let's focus on that and even maybe change up some of their manipulatives or their opportunities in their different centers. We've already done a few centers, as you saw in our schedule, with maybe math or ELA. But these would be a little more on the fun side, the hands on and what we would consider more toys or problem solving. So for me, I see again that opportunity for five and six year olds doing what they love, but with the guide and the connection of a teacher who cares a lot about them. I think of some of my highest points, we talked about the kindergarten magic, appreciate that. But just the gasp of the first couple of times that I sit on the floor with my kids and say, how about I be the elephant and you be the mom? And I use a voice and I'm interacting, playing alongside them and taking notes in my mind or on a quick chat chart so that I can just watch how they're interacting, how they're growing as whole children. And combined with that then is going back to that, the end piece SEL, social emotional learning. We started our day with that, with our whole group meeting, calendar, weather, SEL. And then to end that way as well, I'd say we start with a heart, we end with a heart. We reflect on our day, how did we do today? Did we set a goal with how we were going to raise our hand? Did we set a goal how we were going to cooperate? Let's give some feedback, I'd love to hear from you. And then what are our goals for tomorrow? So ending just with a reflection piece, a chance to share, what did they do? And as I think of just that whole day as we had to dismissal, I'm reminded of my dad teaching me how to shoot a basketball. I never got really great at it, but I do remember the lesson, how he talks about, it's very important, you know, letting the ball go, but the biggest part is the follow through and letting your, both your right and left hand completely follow through even after the ball has left your hands. With this whole day opportunity, I just pictured this is finally letting us have that follow through. Can we actually pour in in the morning, that direct instruction that often feels so fast paced and not quite fleshed out like we would love or quite the opportunities to get that individualized time? And then with adding this time in the afternoon, that we would actually get to watch our hands go all the way through into this shot. And along that, it's our one voice, instead of passing them off to maybe a daycare or another preschool support. Our voice is that consistent, harmonious. I taught you literacy in the morning, I'm listening to you reinforce it in the afternoon. And it allows for that opportunity too, for that creativity, just really seeing their personalities in structured settings within that unstructured. We really appreciate you listening to us as we have put so much time, our experience and our heart. And as you've heard, just a lot of research. So thank you on behalf of teachers and our team.
Thank you kindergarten teachers for that piece. Thank you for adding that personal information. It really does help explain the changes that would be made between a half day program and a full day program. Our kindergarten teachers, these are four of the six that we currently have. They work really hard to provide our students just a well rounded, rigorous education in a half day. But there would be educational benefits for our school district should we have a full day kindergarten in Riverside District ninety six. That would include increasing our contact time with our students, just doubling that contact time from seven hundred and eighty five minutes a week to fifteen, seventy minutes a week. It, that double of time, that doubling of time would give us adequate time to dedicated to academic and socially emotional programming. Currently, our kindergarten teachers take our academic programming and that's built for a full day program. All of our curricular resources are structured around full day programs. They take that academic programming and they adjust it and change it so that they're pulling the important pieces, most important pieces out to be able to teach in a half day, to have that doubling of time. It would allow them to utilize our curricular resources as they're designed. It gives us the ability to address the needs of the whole child as all four teachers described in the different parts of the day that they were talking about. The ability to develop the social emotional skills through play based learning as Ms. Guavara had discussed when talking about play based exploration. And then the ability to provide additional opportunities for enrichment and support. As was mentioned by our teachers, our interventionists and our specialists, including our English learners, teachers, our reading and math specialists, our special education teachers, they all know that to go into a two and a half hour program and try to pull a student or even push in is a difficult, is difficult to do. The instruction is so quick pace because there's such limited time in a half day program. And it's usually all whole group that it's hard for interventionists, our specialists, our English language learners, special education teachers to go in and provide the enrichment or support that students need. But with these, with the doubling of that time, we are able to then, as was mentioned by the teachers, work to meet the individual needs of our students. So maybe a classroom teacher is working individually or sitting side by side and observing and playing and interacting with their students. And while that's happening with the classroom teacher, an interventionist might be coming in and reading a book with one of the students that they're working with or working at a math center with one of the students they're working with. The gift of time can't be underestimated with a full day program.
Jim, I think, oh, go ahead.
I found my space brother. The long term costs, so we showed you the first year, but the long term costs over the ten years are included all the way out. And I'll show you more detail on that later. And facilities, we, we wouldn't have to make any major changes at any of the buildings. So to summarize, finances in facilities, they don't really, they don't present any obstacles to full day kindergarten.
And then I know, I just want to take a few minutes, thank this committee, this exploration of full day kindergarten. You did a wonderful job presenting tonight. I know you have done just tremendous amount of work, meeting and talking and meeting and talking. And I will just share with the Board of Education that this group really set out to be as objective as possible with a careful analysis of half day kindergarten and full day programming, comparing the research, looking at the research, really looking at what it would mean for schedules, what it really means for curricular implementation. Jim Fitten has done a really great job in looking at our finances and facilities. Our Board of Education, you've all had an opportunity to look at this kind of along the way as this group has been doing their work really since the start of this school year, ever since it was identified as really one of the key goals in our strategic plan. So thank you committee for being just very thoughtful and being very objective, balanced. And also so passionate, right, about, about this work. And it is clear from hearing this committee, I know as much as they have looked at balance, balance, balance and being objective, that really we see that the, the balance tips toward the educational benefit. As this group has pointed out, just maybe some of those intangible, the magical moments, Bree, as you point out, that are, you know, the opportunity to have just more of those with more time for our students. So as we put these four really pillars together around full day kindergarten, it seems that there is, you know, evidence that says there is educational benefit for students. The fiscal summary for us is that it does not have, it does not present a barrier for us in terms of long term financial projections. The facilities work that the district has been committed to over the past several years really gives us adequate space to offer full day kindergarten. And I think the community feedback, even just the sheer volume of responses that we had really speaks volumes around the desire of the community as well. Tonight is not the night where, where the Board of Education is going to vote on this. This is really the evening to look at this comprehensive overview of all the information related to full day kindergarten. And so now it's really the board's opportunity to ask any of you or all of you questions. And I just again, want to just offer a huge thank you, not just for your time tonight, but the time that you have really put in since the beginning of the school year, doing this careful analysis. So exploration of full day committee action team, thank you so very much.
Thank you Martha for that summary. And I just, I echo all your thoughts with this team, it's a strong team. We are so lucky to have these wonderful professionals here in Riverside District ninety six. And I've been just so appreciative and grateful to have worked with them on this action team. And so with that, board members, are there any questions?
Angela, thank you very much. This is, this is all very good background and then explanations of the implications. Where does Kite fall into this? And I, I might be misremembering something, so.
So Kite was our intervention program for our kindergarten students. And we would identify a group of students who might need some extra time in the day for intervention services. And they would come to school and the, we had a morning kite and an afternoon kite. So they had their assigned kindergarten class and they would come to school then for the other part of the day. We didn't provide lunch or transportation. So kite, so participation in kite was truly up to parents and it was up to them to pick up their students for lunch and then bring them back after lunch, whether it was for their kindergarten class or for the kite program. And what we noticed is that we weren't able to truly meet the needs of all the students who needed intervention. And then that also, we were also only focusing on intervention. We weren't able to focus then on students who needed enrichment at the kindergarten level as well. So there was a piece of that, that as we think about our strategic, our current strategic plan, there was a piece of kite that wasn't really addressing the opportunities for all students. It was the opportunities for students who had the capital and the ability, their families had the ability for transportation between the two, the AM and the PM day.
Thank you.
I just have one question. Can you talk a little bit, maybe one of the teachers, I don't know who wants to take it, could talk about how the science instruction in the afternoon would be different? I know just from being a central parent, we used to have the PTO involved for science in a can because I just didn't have time to do everything that they need to do in science. Can you talk about what that would look like? I saw a little bit of the photographs, but are you excited for hands on science? Like, tell me what that would look like.
I can, I can talk a little bit about science and then I know that some of the kindergarten teachers have been planning kind of based off our defined STEM training, some new units as well. But really what that would look like is a lot more hands on learning projects, which is kind of what the defined STEM program is all about. So kind of right now with our science and, science and social studies, we're learning the concepts and having discussions about them. But it would be really nice to provide that time for kindergarten students to really dive in and explore it themselves. And that can look a lot of different ways, but a lot of times we kind of want to give them some information and have them kind of choose their own questions and things that they'd like to learn about. So thinking about like a live animal unit, kind of having them choose their own animals, be able to create different, different products and different diagrams and things and kind of making it more of a whole process where they're asking a question, making some predictions, learning how to complete research and what to, where to even go for that. So using different resources like epic and nonfiction books. And then kind of developing in their own way and the way that works best for the way that they learn, a culminating project. So one student might want to create a diagram about a different type of habitat that they learned about. Or another student might want to create more of a video. I've had students on, I did a defined STEM project this past year, just kind of piloting it. And a lot of my students kind of created different green screen backgrounds of different planets and kind of wrote about things that they would take to those planets. So it would just kind of look like a lot more of that hands on learning where the students are taking a little bit more ownership. So it would just kind of look like a lot more of that hands-on learning where the students are taking a little bit more ownership and we're giving them a little bit more time to explore it on their own. So that's something that I would be really looking forward to is just giving them a little bit more extra time with that. And then any other kindergarten teachers, I'm sure you guys have things you might want to share as well.
So basically like a fuller, a more full extension of the scientific method for the little guys that maybe just get a tiny peek at it. Is that, does that sound right?
May I jump in there too, just for one additional comment? So I know that's why, one of the reasons why we brought our early learner team on, because a lot of times what will happen in the morning is what students will naturally, they're naturally curious, they're going to ask questions, they're going to wonder. And the center-based learning that we were speaking of in the presentation, that's where those questions can be explored and inserted. So teachers can take almost what the, what the students are sharing with them in the morning and during their, you know, during their questioning session or their discovery session and somehow implement or put that question or that discovery piece into the center so that children discover it naturally and kind of come about the answer on their own. Because we know that when, you know, they have that inquiry within them and they, they want to understand and learn, that's where real learning and that's where real understanding happens. And so that, allowing for that more, that more center-based learning in the afternoon that pairs with the learning in the morning is just going to enhance the overall experience for the child.
Thank you, because I, it's been a while. My, I only have a third grade, but it's been a while since we've done the, the science projects that would just help give a better picture. I appreciate it.
So, Joe, man, I had one quick question about, or maybe depending on how quick, on slide eight, the one with that chart. I think that's, to me, that was pretty staggering when I was looking at that prior to the meeting, but I wanted to make sure I was interpreting it correctly. So I don't know if we could flip back to that real quick. But as far as like gap size, could you kind of help me understand what exactly gap size is measuring? Like, what does the point three-two actually mean? And then on the, on the non, or yeah, not low income versus low income, is that saying that the gap size between those two is what we're measuring here?
Cause Mary, do you have that in front of you? I don't have it.
Yeah, this slide in front of me. I just, I know that it was, it was looking at the disparity in terms of their academic readiness overall in terms of how far behind they were with their, their age, their typical age peers. And it was just looking at when you had half-day programs compared to full-day programs, that the disparity wasn't as significant. That that was able, that during those early years, those formative years, with the extra additional time, teachers were able to progress their students' achievement further and address those needs so that they entered first or second grade more in power with their peers.
Okay.
So Wesley, to your question, also to your question, I, what I would like to look at, and then I can also email it to the board, is an email, or we can communicate it, is, is that, like, when looking at not low income versus low income, is that point five, one, point five, one year or months, is that point five, one?
Yeah.
Percentage points. Like, I want to look at the report to see what's the unit of measure for that point five, one compared to point three, two.
Yeah, that, that's, that would be helpful. Thank you. Because I wasn't exactly sure how to interpret that. Was that, because I assume one point zero is, is equal. And then anything below that would be a negative or detractor, however you want to look at it. But I wasn't sure if that was like fifty percent or like, is that a percentage or what? So yeah, that would be helpful if you could look that up. But I mean, just looking at this chart, like the, the visual really stood out pretty glaringly. So I just want to make sure I was interpreting that correctly. But so then the, on the, the bottom portion of it, that's saying that not low-income students compared to low-income, so not low-income students would be the one point zero. And the gap is the gap of low-income students compared to not low-income students. Is that accurate?
It could, it could be one point zero. It could be that low-income students performed at one place and not low-income students performed at another place. And the difference between those two places was point three, two.
I think I had looked at that. Angela, I'm sorry, Wesley, I was just thinking, I remember looking at this when you had sent us all the research. And I thought it really did have to do with reducing the disparity and the gaps when they entered, just looking at the subgroups, am I correct? So depending on the subgroup, then they're going to come, come there with a certain level of preparedness. And so that's really, it is even, I think, even if it averages out by third grade, you're still letting everybody come at the same playing field, I think is what I thought it was saying in the article. I could be wrong, but maybe Angela can.
No, I think, I think that's helpful. So I need to get like one point zero is not a starting point or an equilibrium point. That's, that's just the number that's on this chart. So, okay, all right. No, that's helpful in making sure I'm just understanding this. So either, either way, the visual of the gaps here are, are pretty glaring from this particular study anyway.
And that is what the study was trying to show is that when you have that, again, that gift of time, you are able to address the needs of all students so that the gaps between students are, you can see they're significantly lower in the study than they were for the half-day program students of the same student populations with the gap disparities that they had.
Yeah. Yeah. And just thinking of our other, one of our other objectives of equity, I mean, I think this, this chart really plays into that component of it as well.
So I have the article, I do have the, it one, it says here, it says that it shows the impact of full-day kindergarten, the end of kindergarten literacy skills, the effect size for all children was approximately point three standard deviations with Hispanic children experiencing particularly large gains.
So, so it's a standard deviation. That makes sense. Okay.
Thank you, Casmira.
Yeah, thank you.
I had a question really quickly. Just wanted to make sure, because I, after reading the community survey, just I know there's a few questions that maybe the community has. Just wanted to make sure, two things. One, when Jim described that there are no finance, like that we're ready financially, like we can absorb this, it does not mean we are raising taxes or anything. I just wanted to be, make sure I was clear on that, that this, this plan does not affect the tax bill necessarily, you know. Because I feel like that's something in the community survey, we, that was reiterated, reiterated, like, don't, you know. So I just wanted clarity on that.
No, sorry, go ahead, John.
Go ahead, sorry, dude.
No, and Jim's gonna, I was just gonna say, Jim's gonna get into more detail on that in the finance sections, but no, the, the current fund balance could ea- very easily absorb the additional personnel cost for a full-day kindergarten. It actually should be more, what I consider more of just a footnote.
Yeah, I, and I, you're correct, Dave and Linda. I think the, the aspect is simply that the, we have a very good fund balance and our current revenue tax dollars is sufficiently above our expenses that it, we still have a surplus.
No, no, and that's, to your point exactly, Joel. I mean, we, we put to get, we, we spent, we put in our reserves, our reserves, four point seven million dollars last year. So our expenses were a lot less than what we brought in.
Right.
I appreciate Linda saying it though, because I know there were people that said, if you pass this, it means our taxes are going to go up. So I do appreciate her saying that because I think there was some misconceptions about how that would be paid for. So.
You know, something we didn't specifically talk about. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. The other quick thing I wanted to quickly ask is just, so right now, we really value the size of our classrooms in District 96. So my assumption is, you know, we have nine sections of kindergarten. We will still have those nine sections. They will just be extended a full day. Just making sure we're also very cognizant of the fact that we don't want our class sizes ballooning. So I just wanted to make sure we were, you know, that was still part of this plan is that we're really, you know, cognizant of the fact that we're, we're maintaining our class sizes. It really won't affect the, you know, besides the extension of the day, the actual like classroom size.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that one. I think it will probably expand the enrollment per classroom in kindergarten. But again, I looked at, the district had looked at full-day kindergarten analysis back about ten, even fifteen years ago. They were looking at nine sections of kindergarten. We continue to look at nine sections of kindergarten. One of the interesting things that happens in Riverside District 96 is that we get a good number of new first graders and we actually get a good number of new second graders. And we think what it is, is often it's families that are pursuing a full-day kindergarten option elsewhere and then deciding to enroll in the public school perhaps as first or even second graders. So I anticipate where we may be in the high teens, let's say, in our kindergarten numbers. Maybe we are closer to that twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. So I think our class sizes could be a bit larger than they are in kindergarten, but I don't think they're going to be larger than what they are in our primary classes.
And Martha, that's, that's an, I think that's an accurate prediction based on what we've heard in the community that there, some families choose to pursue a full-day program elsewhere. And then when the option of regular full day in the elementary is available, that's when they switch over. So I, that's certainly out there and that's, I think that's fairly accurate.
The one, the one variable that might be hard to figure out is the parents that choose to go to a full-day option and then never return to D96, that might go into D96. Like as those new first or second graders, those that, that never left, so to speak, because they're going to enroll in kindergarten. And I think that's a harder number to figure out, but there's only so many houses in Riverside. I mean, our community is landlocked, so I don't think it's going to balloon like some of our, you know, near west and or like western and southern suburbs where you've seen like just massive population expansion. We, we do have some limitations on that. So I don't think it should be too much of a problem that we couldn't absorb that.
Well, to, to your point, Wes, go, go ahead, Martha.
Oh, I should say, you know, we did that demographic analysis. I mean, there is, there is a risk in that, that piece, right? I mean, there are communities that describe that many more families than come to the district. We have nine sections of every grade level throughout our elementary programming, throughout our, you know, K through five programming. And as you all know, we've worked hard to kind of have that balance of three sections at Ames, three sections at Central, two sections now at Blythe, one section at Hollywood. A significant enrollment increase would be, would certainly be a challenge for the district.
If we had to add one more classroom, if we really one more teacher, about fifty thousand dollars, we got a first-year teacher and possibly add a classroom somewhere. So it's not going to blow the projections by a lot.
I would guess would be more of a space issue than a financial one, correct, Martha?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, and yeah, if we have those additional students, then that problem grows and gets one classroom bigger or however many classrooms bigger each year.
But, but again, there's, there's only like, like, that could totally happen, but there's only so many houses in River, like that feed in the Riverside. So you'd have to have people selling to families that have specifically kindergarteners. Because really that, that problem isn't any different for first, second, third, you know, through eighth grade type thing. So it's definitely an unknown, but I think it's a somewhat of a controlled unknown, I guess, if that makes any sense.
That is, I, I do have, I do have a question. I guess this mute question, and I don't know if you have this answer, Martha, but I, I also do know there's, there's a certain amount of attrition to those who have started in District 96 and then have left to go to a private school. Do we have any sense of what the attrition is like?
Um, that's a, that's a great question, David. I'm sure we could analyze that. There's not a lot of attrition. It's more the other way. We tend to grow as the grade levels go up rather than the opposite. I mean, there are families that move for whatever reason. It tends to be that, that you hear about a family disenrolling because of relocation.
Okay.
Before, before we get too much talking amongst ourselves, I, I did have a question for a couple of the, the, the kindergarten teachers who were on tonight. And I hope I'm not putting them on the spot, but I, I noticed, I noted some had experience of teaching both in half-day and full-day programs. And I'm, I'm wondering if they could share their experience with that. And again, my apologies if I'm putting anyone on the spot.
I'm happy to share. Definitely, I went from half-day to full-day, then back again to half. And for sure, I, I wondered some at first of like, is it my personality? Or is it that I just, I like to be able to take my time and flesh out what is needed to be taught and then reflected. Definitely felt like moving to half-day has been, if you've ever had to move from a big house to a smaller one and try to fit things in the cabinets. So been, been doing a bit of that. On the bright side, I, I've loved working with Kristin McPherson. She's really great about staying on schedule and she'd been with the district for five years. So she's been really good about making what we have work well with having kids really learn to read and get their standards mastered. So the job has been done and kids are being loved and cared for. I just picture there could even be more. And I remember that really well from my full-day experience. I'm just having that. Also, just that single-mindedness, when you don't have two groups that you're juggling and forty parents, you really can put that time and attention into making that group your group. And so that part is definitely a gift. And I know we'd all really welcome that.
Sorry, I don't want to interrupt another teacher or anything. I just, once, one thing that I appreciated learning from this whole study was the concept of the consistent caregiver throughout the day. Because I would venture from the responses that we got, that the majority of our half-day kindergartners go to a different program in the afternoon or vice versa. And so they're with a different set of caregivers. And so we have different sets of experiences, good or bad, whatever they might be. But I, I do like the idea of them forming more solid relationships with all of you. So I appreciate your feedback.
Did any other kindergarten teacher want to share?
I can speak to it a little bit. So my full day before, it was unfortunately more like academic-based. We didn't have much of the play-based, but I think the biggest difference is before we just, like Alyssa said, we had time. Nothing was rushed. And here, it's like, we only have twenty minutes. Now we need to do writing. And I feel like sometimes the kids are rushing and then it's like, they barely even got to finish their work all the, like, all the way. So I feel like just having that extra time of follow-through and actually having the kids get their work done, that's helpful. And then I'm on the science committee too. And planning those lessons right now, it's kind of like we're planning them, but when to, when do we do them? So just having more time for that. And I think relationships are good. Not that relationships are bad in half-day, like love the kids, they love their teachers, we have fun, but having the relationship with one set of kids all day, I think that's a benefit too.
Um, yeah, I, I really agree with both of the teachers that spoke. I, I really just also think that we really need to credit these half-day kindergartners that kind of get through this day. Because I, I've heard year after year from parents that, you know, they come home and it's just like, like they have, have really just spent their whole day, you know, lesson through lesson through lesson. So I just kind of feel like with my full-day program, one of the biggest differences was being able to follow through with just sort of those SCL components, you know, if something does happen during our half-day program, an issue between peers or an issue that, you know, just kind of happened at recess, it's harder to find that time to really sit with those students and talk about what happened and teach them strategies to kind of move forward from that. So I kind of feel like when I did teach full-day programs, there, it almost was more of just a, a relaxed type of feel, like you could walk in the room and students are working independently. And there are some days in half-day that it is like that, but it is a little bit more of, you know, are we going to finish this lesson? Can the kindergartners retain that memory if we have to stop at mid-lesson and revisit it another day? Because we didn't have enough time, you know, or is it even beneficial at that point? So I'd say just overall, just having that time to breathe and relax and really talk through those problem-solving concepts is a big difference for me.
And although I haven't had the luxury of being a full-day kindergarten teacher, being in a half-day program over the last eighteen years, I can say that eighteen years ago, the kind of curriculum and the kind of activities that we were doing are vastly different than what we are doing today. And the rigor that we have today. than what we are doing today. And the rigor that we have today is um, the children are doing it and they're enjoying it and they're learning and they're making growth gains, but I feel like it's a pace that for some, it's unsustainable. And I, and I do imagine that they go home and they say, I'm exhausted because I just went, 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 I went. And we don't have that luxury, that gift of that exploration, that inquiry, that let's take this to the next step. It's really a quick pace. And, um, so I think from my perspective, just having that, oh, we want to talk about this a little bit more. We want to go one step further. We want to look at this from a different lens, through a different perspective, would really be a gift.
Thank you.
Now, thanks everyone for answering, answering, uh, my question on that. Uh, now I, I have a recollection from when we've discussed this in the past and I think Sheri alluded to it a little bit that I, I definitely, I, I, it might've just been one study that we were pointed to, but I, I recall seeing that in the early going, uh, the academic preparedness of kids who participated in full day program versus half day program definitely was measurably greater. However, by the time those kids got to, I think it was third grade, those numbers kind of even out or wash out, um, and, and start to, the, the other kids who were in a half day program tend to catch up. I, I wonder if that was something that was observed in any of the studies or is, was that, I think it was an old study at the time. So perhaps that's no longer uh, no longer an accurate statement, or, or could someone speak to that?
I can. So the studies that we looked at for half day, um, that is some of the, like the comments that were made that we need to still continue to look at the longitude and effects of half day versus full day kindergarten. Or that the, uh, the gaps between performance level off in later academic years. The one thing that I'd say to that is thinking about our strategic plan, if we can help our students sooner with a full day program, rather than continuing to have students who are struggling um, because they've been in a half day program and continuing to need provide interventions because they've been in a half day program. I think that's better for them. And it also addresses our strategic plan of looking at our equity and opportunity, um, equity and opportunities. I think the benefit of a full day kindergarten program, um, meeting needs earlier, rather than continuing to need to provide intervention to get to that point. And we, some students we know from our half day kindergarten programs don't always get to that point. I think there's just a benefit. The benefit of, even if it levels off, the benefit of bringing them together is very important.
I think one thing that I really, um, appreciate about however you guys made the schedule, working together for the potential, um, you know, full day schedule was that the inclusion of the S E L in play was very deliberate. And that, that I think for me, I, I, I really would not be in favor of it if they were going to be drilled all day pushing papers and on devices. Really that's you know, from what, everything that we read, I, I really did appreciate the benefit of play for the children and hearing you guys talk about your relationships with them and, and, uh, social emotional talks that you can have. I think that regardless of what happens in third, I think those are beneficial to our community and everything that we've been through, um, being at home during pandemic. So I did appreciate uh, like what Angela's saying, looking at it in a balanced way. And certainly the equity of those that don't have the same experiences in preschool to bring them up to where they could be if they had had the right, you know, the proper interventions earlier. So.
I had a question. So I just want to echo my thanks and appreciation to the kindergarten action team for all the work that you did to bring this report to us and just your thorough analysis. I really have a great deal of respect for all of you and really value your professional opinion. So thank you so much. Um, I guess one of the questions I had was I'm curious to know some of the conversations that happened, uh, landing on the option for the half day for the families that choose to participate in a half day program only. On the one hand, I like the idea of providing families with the choice to make the decision that might be right for their families and learners. But on the other, I look at some of the data like that Wesley was talking about with some of the achievement gaps and I get concerned with providing the choice. Although I know that many of our neighboring districts and some of the studies show that um, the students or the districts that began with the choice for a half day, either no families took them up on it or within maybe a couple of months' time, uh, they had opted into the full day. So maybe I've just argued myself in a circle, but I'm just curious what some of the conversations were uh, to land on the option for half day for those that should elect it.
Martha, we're, am I wrong that you had told us that this is really the state um, requires us to allow for provision for half day or am I incorrect in thinking it?
Yeah, no, you're correct. Um, so kindergarten, interestingly, is not mandated. Um, and school districts, if they do provide full day, um, must provide. You know,
That's an easy answer.
Yeah, our, in our decision to kind of embed the half day into the full day potentially is somewhat driven by space also, to be really frank about that. Um, and certainly looking at some of our neighboring districts that have recently added full day kindergarten, what they have shared is it's near zero, if not zero, families that decide to, um, take advantage of the half day only. So um, we'd, we'll have to wait and see on that. Um, but, um, but yeah, it, it is not a, we don't have the choice. The, the state requires us to provide that choice.
No, that's a helpful reminder. Thank you.
So I, I think that's a good point though, Stephanie, what you're trying to get at, or I think what you're trying to get at is like, what I was looking at, I, I sort of had that in the back of my mind when I was looking at that. What is a, what does a day look like in kindergarten? And it felt like whether that was intentional or not, it does seem like a lot of the um, acad- academic part of it was skewed toward the earlier part of the day. And the latter part of the day was like reflecting on it or supporting it or something like that. So like from an equity standpoint, do we feel like, uh, if, if a parent were to choose half day, that they would still be getting, um, maybe for a lack of a better way to phrase it, like they're still getting kind of a quality education. They're just, obviously they're going to miss out on that second half of it. And that's just a time factor, but it seems like we've kind of scheduled it so that the, a lot of that important learning that they would, they would get is at that, that, uh, that morning section before they would leave. Um, I don't, I don't know if that's a, a true assessment from what I'm looking at, but I, I think it's kind of a good question. Like, are we kind of accounting for that as we build out that schedule just to try to do, do whatever we can to, to help those students that, that do choose or parents that choose a, a half day option?
Yes. So when we built the, oh, go ahead, Kazemar. Uh, you go ahead.
Yeah. So it was, it was intentional in terms of how we created that schedule, um, because we didn't know that there could be parents and families that, that did opt for a half day program, um, based on, you know, their family situation. And we wanted to make sure that we looked at the half day program and that all the content and the standards that we would normally provide, like typically provide this year to our half day students, that those students were still receiving that experience. Uh, we also talked about things like specials, like right now, kindergartners receive one 30 minute art, one 30 minute music, one 30 P E session per week that would go to two. And we would have one of those classes happening in the morning and the other set happening in the afternoon. And then it wouldn't be any new content being taught in the afternoon. It would just deepen whatever was experienced in the morning. And that way, the students did receive the content and no one was at a disadvantage. Um, but it does create that opportunity, like you noted, that the, the play base, the center base, things that you know, maybe possibly are limited or missing in the curriculum right now are happening in the PM.
Am I, now, I, I work with little ones, but in a different context, but I, I have noticed that they are if you're trying to get them to absorb something more detailed, in my opinion, this is my opinion from working with them, that in the morning, they are a bit more receptive and fresh versus the play that they might benefit from the afternoon. I might be generalizing too much. I don't know if the teachers can to speak to that. And so I kind of like what Kazemar is saying, that if they choose half day, it's, it's fairly equitable and they can still get a special in, but I, I do think they have a freshness about them, which is why they're, they're up so early and ready to go before anybody else is ready. Like my teenager is much different. Um, so I don't know if someone can speak to that, but.
I mean, I would just agree, you know, that, you know, we do, you know, I think that, I think everyone feels that way. I think that's why we have such a high demand every year for, you know, parents asking for AM sessions. Um, you know, that's it's always the principal's best time of the year. When we have to give those decisions out, but, um, but yeah, no, I think that you're right. It's, it, it definitely is something where, you know, students, um, and I think mostly people too. I mean, even if you're not considered technically a morning person, um, you might be more, you know, open to, to learning new ideas or you're, you have more energy or um, more mind space in the morning to take more information in. But just going back to what, you know, Wesley said, asked, it, it was intentional in terms of how we created the schedule and and it was a very thoughtful, um, lengthy discussion among the committee members as we created it.
Which then I, I think it, it, it seems like if anybody chooses half day, they, it would be a morning half day. Like there would not be a, a PM option, right?
That's correct.
It also maintains the neighborhood school balance that, you know, we kind of thought about, should one school offer a half day program? That gets into that whole transferring away from your neighborhood school. That's so complicated here. So this embedding it within the full day program really seemed to make sense on a number of fronts. Um, Wesley, I don't know if your question meant this, but I also feel like you're implying this idea, if there's a student who's demonstrating maybe an academic or social emotional need and they're in half day and we might prefer that they're in full day because there's an opportunity to extend some of those, whether it's intervention, enrichment, additional social emotional supports. Um, the thing I would just say is that even in my whole career where there's been half day kindergarten, you know, here in Riverside, we had the kite program that we invited families to have their children enroll and to get that additional support. Um, I think that it's very likely that if we had a child choose half day, that we really felt would greatly benefit from that full day because of some additional needs that we would really work with that family to invite and encourage them to enroll in the full day program.
Yeah, Martha, I'll second, I'd like to support what you're saying in that we would have an obligation to recommend that the child in question gets that extra intervention and support. I, that goes worth throughout our mission and that is any child in the district is we, we give them support. We recommend additional helps where necessary.
Exactly.
So it seems pretty obvious, but it feels like we're coming to the end of the conversation maybe. Um, and it wasn't explicitly stated on a slide, so I'm just going to ask, the recommendation of the committee is to implement full day kindergarten, correct?
As we went through the procedure, looked at the research, really tried to be balanced. Um, I will say that even with the research, you know, there were multiple slides about full day kindergarten, one slide about half day. Even with the research, when we divided it up as a committee, some working on full day research, some working on a half day, it was a struggle to find articles that outright explicitly supported half day. Um, but yes, the gift of time is the biggest piece and being able to not rush our students, not rush the teachers, the committee's recommendation would be full day kindergarten.
Thank you, Angel.
Oh, thanks for that question, uh, Wesley. That's, I had this exact same question. So thank you.
Yeah, just, I, I like making sure things are straightforward and clear for, for everybody, for all of us. No, I, I'll just reiterate, uh, I, I appreciate all the time and effort that all of you have put into this. You know, Angela has been keeping us up to date on, on all the hours spent and just in meetings and all the prep time that goes into it. So as everybody else says, I, I agree. I, I really appreciate all the work that you guys have put into trying to be fair and balanced and objective about what to do here. So thank you.
Yeah, second that for sure.
Yes, no, definitely. Thank you very much.
Definitely. Yes.
Thank you. Cause the, as we know, um, after last year, it's not like you have nothing to do. It's been a really hard two years and I committee work, as you know, is a lot of hours. So thank you so much.
You know, just really quickly, I think about, you know, the last two years we've been in a pandemic, but when we, you know, think a little higher, we've gotten through strategic planning. We're having this conversation. I'm really proud of this district for continuing to move forward while it felt like we were so, uh, stuck. So I just wanted to thank the administration, the team for doing that because I've been, uh, in the district for 15 years. I don't have kids in the schools anymore. I have high schoolers, but I've been waiting for this conversation for 12 years. So I'm really excited that e- even in the midst of a really, you know, challenging time, um, we're taking on these opportunities to move forward. So I appreciate everybody's work. Thank you. Thank you all. Um, and thank you, huge thank you from me to the committee and to Mrs. Gorman for her assistance in leading the committee. Um, they've just, they've done a great job as you all have seen.
And Linda, I think it speaks to this committee absolutely certainly to the administrative team, but to the board of education as well, right? You know, this has been, you know, how do we in the midst of a global pandemic, not only, uh, keep our kids in school as much as we possibly can and keep them as safe as we possibly can, but to continue to move forward with some big ideas that we've really been wanting to, um, to address. So, so thank you all as well.
I'm just ecstatic. We have space to make these kinds of choices that we never had. Like Linda was saying, so many years ago, it was never, ever, ever a possibility. We just had nowhere to put them. So I'm so thankful for everybody that worked on that, the other projects, the facilities that allows us to have these conversations because I mean, we have to have a reasonable teaching environment. So thank you to everyone who worked on that.
And just one more final thank you on behalf of the committee, uh, just a big thanks to, um, Angela Dozel and Dr. Raito in the board of education for allowing the committee to be formed and to explore, um, just this, you know, very important, um, and obviously, um, passionate, um, uh, group that led this, uh, charge to, to research full day kindergarten, extra, um, implementation in District 96. We're so appreciative.
Thank you indeed. Thank you indeed for your time.
I know we have a few other education committee items, um, that will be much more brief than this one. Um, also is, uh, just a huge thank you to the committee again and again and again, but you are also welcome to stay and you are welcome to drop off the Zoom if that, um, is easier. You have to get ready for your e-learning days tomorrow.
Yeah, that's right. Good point, Martha.
I don't think they like us.
And now we're onto the second part of our, our, our very long agenda.
And then we had a brief update on goal areas one, two, and three. And then I know you, calendar and math, Angela.
So I will start with goal area one, um, because I will be very short. So first update would have been the exploration of full day kindergarten as one of our action teams and that was just done. And then the second update is on, uh, the second action team under goal area one, which you haven't heard much about this year. But that's our standard space reporting, um, action team goal. And so the action team leaders for our standard space reporting goal are Kim, uh, Hefner, who's the principal at Hollywood Elementary School and Katie Kaya, uh, who's the student coordinator at Hauser Junior High. They'll be working with me to lead that action team and we are meeting, um, myself with the two action team leaders in the next couple of weeks to begin to identify our smarty goals as well as, um, our timeline and, uh, potential outcomes. And real quick, the smarty goals are what we've worked on with C E C for any of our action teams that are in progress and, um, we're all aware of smart goals, uh, specific, measurable, actionable, timely. I forgot they are realistic. Um, the IE is a newer piece that it talks about inclusion and equity, which fits perfectly with the third goal under goal one, which is our opportunity and equity. Um, and we are addressing opportunities and equity throughout all of our goals. And that's why we've, uh, looked at smart T goals instead of smart goals.
And I can address goal number two. Um, as we looked at the strategic plan and the goal number two, which is learning environment and culture. The last time I met and shared with you in November, I shared the actions of the different teams and what they were all, um, working on at that time. The three, um, action teams under learning environment, culture is social emotional learning, culture responsive and student centered learning. And when we met in December with the action team leaders and the district leadership team, working with C E C, it became very evident as we were talking that there was concern by these three. that there was concern by these three action teams under goal number two that much of the work that they were doing had the same goals in mind. And there was concern about the fact that they did not want to do work in silos, that much of the work that they needed to do needed to be done in tandem. So as we moved forward through that meeting, we discussed that the team that the three action teams should become one. But with that, they would still take on the research of their own individual areas as each of these are very big ideas and very important ideas that require research and attention and expertise. So moving forward, we will all be one team. We've even worked out schedules for the just yesterday, actually, for the remainder of this school year of how we will meet and some timelines of meetings for next year. And what we're looking is that when we do meet, we will meet as one whole group. Then the teams will break up into other groups to work on their specific information and bring it all back to make sure that we're all working on the same path. There was a concern that we would be doing, working in silos and some of the work over overlapping. So now we'll be working in tandem more as we move forward. And before we put this in place, I did meet individually with all three teams from December to the end of January, and we discussed how we would do this. Everyone is on board and they all seem to think it's a really good idea and a positive way to move forward with goal number two. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. I'll be giving a brief update on goal three, which is high quality staff. There are two action teams associated with this goal area. The first update will be on the personalized professional learning team. Angela Dozel is the lead action team leader who oversees the committee's work and will be providing an update on the progress. Angela?
So for our professional personalized personalized professional learning, as you know, we've been working with our newly implemented professional learning planning team, our PLP team, which is comprised of staff members and administrators and myself and a consultant from West 40 as we work on personalizing our professional learning. Throughout the year, we've been working on what we call a mastermind structure where staff members have been focusing on either culture responsive practices or socially emotional learning. Following each mastermind session, each 75 minute professional learning session, we collect survey data from our staff members to see how the professional learning session went and what went well and what might need adjustments. And we continue to make adjustments based off of that. So we had our last 75 minute professional learning mastermind session in January and beginning of January. And we have reviewed that data. We have another one coming up in March. And so we're using that data to continue to refine the process and to look at how we want to structure professional learning for the 22, 23 school year. So the team is working together. Each month we meet, we're working together to continue to refine the process for our last 375 minute professional learning sessions this year and working to develop our overarching goals for professional learning for next year as well as a timeline for the 75 minute sessions and the structures that will be used.
Thank you, Angela. The second action team associated with goal three is focused on diverse workforce. I am the lead action team leader for this group. We've been meeting about every six to eight weeks and last met formally in middle of January. At that time, team members provided updates on tasks that they had been assigned. We also reviewed the first draft of our action plan and was able to add some additional elements based on our discussion items that day. A working draft of our action plan, including some of the action items we've identified for the first phase of the plan was provided via a memo and shared with the board. Additional details regarding the work we're doing were also included in that memo. Earlier this week, a subset of team members, actually it was yesterday, were able to meet again. And additional progresses made on the implementation plan, including proposed timeline and budget estimates for the first phase. The draft plan will be continue to be refined and reviewed with the cabinet team for feedback in the coming weeks and the team will meet again on March 10. Any questions?
Can you summarize, and this might require some input from Martha and Angela? How do we currently go about advertising for positions? I know in theory, but is it mostly through our own job boards?
So, you know, we certainly have a requirement we post internally first to see if there's people that might be interested. And then we use this K 12 job spot, which is really like a state board of ed hosted site. But Donna has shared they go out to that then takes it out to other sites like Indeed and a few other things. Don, you may be more well versed on that than I am.
Um, yeah, I know that the jobs are often end up in like, I think the I S B has as a job board that ends up there. I'm not sure about the, I can't speak to the indeed portion. But those are some of the things we'll be looking at in terms of how to broaden the where where their where jobs are posted, different job boards. But also job boards that maybe are targeting diverse communities or diverse applicants, creating partnerships with universities that could could once again bring in, you know, more applicants.
And and that's kind of where I was going is with the current method. We're probably getting in front of a typical pool of candidates. And so how do we shift that focus towards the more diverse? I'm assuming that we are evaluating right now that our typical pool isn't quite as diverse as we'd like. I realize that's somewhat of a rhetorical question.
No, I said, I think that that's probably fair to say, although haven't really delved into, you know, the, you know, if there's any, if that information is really statistically available, because a lot of applicants, you're just seeing names. So one of the things, one of the new things we're doing is there is a diversity in education job fair, virtual job fair this April that we have signed up for. And that's that's in in that draft plan. And but we have already signed up for it and we will be attending attending that. There are some other, there are local area schools that attend that is a national job fair, but I know that CPS Hinsdale, I believe Woodridge. I can't think off the top of my head the others, but there's about four or five area districts that participated in that. And I did contact some individuals within those districts, the suburban ones, not CPS. And then got thought positive feedback on it, although it it is, you know, depending on on the again, depending on the area where the candidate's being pulled from oftentimes some minority candidates are more interested in working with populations that have higher higher minority population than we do as often as the case. So it has been a real learning process just you know, getting, you know, working with connecting with other school districts, just gathering information, getting feedback on what their experience has been. And given that kind of the timing of when we're we're starting, you know, we wanted to get, we wanted to get some things accomplished before this hiring cycle, which really begins, you know, February, March, where we start advertising jobs for next year. So it was kind of a tight window for especially this phase one, but given the items that we're going to try to get accomplished over the next, you know, six to eight months, then really next year even have a better feel for possibly what worked and continue to build on and expand some of the strategies around this this topic.
And that makes sense. I mean, realistically, this is to make a change in hiring in our hiring candidate pool is going to take time. It's not, this isn't a one year effort by any means. This is it's a forever effort, really.
Right. And and once we
fully support that it's going to, it's going to take some time to see results. So don't let this committee get dispirited by a longer timeline.
No, and and we knew that we all knew that kind of going into this and actually Martha and Wesley and I had met previously and talked about that this isn't, it's not a quick fix and we don't know what type of you know, we don't know what progress we might make in that area. And that it is, it is a long term plan. It's really more about making sure that we have the right, you know, those right strategies in place that that will at least, you know, recruit, you know, will at least get more applicants in. And then after that, well, we're also, we also want to take a look at what are, just what our internal practices are like with our with administration and just look at our actual interview and hiring or, you know, our interviewing and recruiting practices as well.
Yeah, I mean, this is even, this isn't even really a five year objective. Like, I appreciate you saying that, Joel. Like, this is a forever effort, right? Like, this is an ongoing thing that we always have to look at. And it's not easy either. And so I think I don't really have any questions. I'll just comment like I really when I, when I first saw this, this draft that was put into board book, I really appreciate the effort you guys put in and like the broad based thinking around the different things that we need to do to try to tackle this. And that, to me, that was kind of the year one thing is just figuring out where are we at? And then like year two is how do we improvement prove it? And then year three is, you know, if if it's not improving, what are we doing wrong? Because like you, you can't do anything if you don't have candidates in the pool. But to your point, Don, just because you have candidates in the pool, doesn't mean they're going to accept an offer if we make one. And we're not going to offer just because, right? Like, it still has to be the right candidate. So there's a ton of variables that go into this. So this is really more of a mindset, like making sure we have the right mindset in how we're bringing high quality staff into the district and then retaining them and making sure that it's representative of all the experiences of everybody, all the students being reflected in in the staff and all of that. So it is a, this is a very complex one that is the needle is going to move pretty slowly, I would expect on this one over time, but it's just one of those like we have got to be very intentional and diligent in in how we facilitate this. So I think this is a great foundational starting point for where we are at really what, six, eight? I don't know. I guess whenever the the plan was officially kind of set in motion, we're very, very early on here. So I think this is a a great foundation for what we're trying to do and a good starting point. So I really like what I what I saw here. So.
Thank you. And just one other put to your point, Wes, what we did kind of add, and it's also in the in the update is given some of the research that we've, you know, been looking over and some webinars that we've attended is now the added in the diversity, equity and inclusion, the the sense of belonging. And that's and that's really been the focus. And that's how you retain people because you can bring people in, but if they don't feel like they belong here, they're not going to stay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that was the one that that part stood out to me the most. I think it's just like kind of putting somewhat of a definition of what these things mean. Just so that there's no personal interpretation that's different than than what we're trying to actually achieve here. So I do a lot of work with the D E and I part, the B is, that's the first time I've seen that. I'm like, I really like that. I'm going to take that. I'm going to use that in other things that I work on. So
I will share a webinar with you.
Yeah, like if you don't feel like you should be here, you're going to leave. It doesn't matter what else you do. If people don't, you know, incorporate you or you don't feel like part of that community, then you're going to go somewhere else. So I really like that addition or at least an addition from my perspective of how I've engaged in the whole diversity, equity and inclusion process in other capacities.
Thank you.
This is a very kind of a subtle tangent, but it reminds me of being a younger girl and we were told, yes, you can be an engineer, you can do all these things. And I've had friends that would go into engineering, but they were never asked a question in class or they might be ignored for a project. And so that sense of well being, whether it's someone that looks like you or has experiences like you, I think is so important to make them feel that ownership. So I do, I agree with Wesley tremendously. That's you, you can invite them in, but if they don't feel welcome, I think I totally agree with Wesley. That's so important. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think our next one more.
Right, the elementary math curriculum and also the calendar, Angela. Maybe we have calendar list first.
Calendar. So we'll start with the calendar. We have a calendar team that meets yearly comprised of teachers, secretaries, parents, and we serve as an advisory committee for the board. Because ultimately the board approves the school calendar for the school years. So during this calendar, this year's calendar meeting, we had a discussion that started to talk about the possibility of an earlier start date. Given that Riverside Brookfield High School starts the week of August 15, what would be the possibility, like look, talking and discussing about what would be the possibility of starting that same week to closer align our calendars to the high school? So as we discussed that and did some research, we also saw that District 96 has not started that early in the past. We looked at the past seven years of calendars. We have not started that early. We've usually started somewhere in that third week of school, somewhere around the 21st, 22nd, 23rd. So I bring to you from the team two calendars. One that has considers a start date of Wednesday, August 17 for students. We'd have teacher institute days on the Monday and Tuesday proceeding. And then school would end on Tuesday, May 30. One of the benefits of starting early are is looking at that end of the year earlier time. Well, one of the benefits is starting early is aligning closer to the high school calendar. It also has students ending before June, where we've noticed as educators that students sometimes struggle as we get into that June month with being able to continue to focus. A byproduct or a an advantage of starting earlier, but was not really part of the considerations that then any summer construction we have would be able to start as soon as June 1, where if we look at the second calendar option that's brought forward to you, any summer work would end up starting after that end date and the end date would be around June 6. So the second calendar looks at a start day of Wednesday, August 24, with the institute days being the Monday, August 22 and Tuesday, August 23. And our final day of school, if we start on the 24th would be, as I said, June 6, Tuesday, June 6. So I bring these two calendars to you, the school board, to hear from you, your thoughts, your feedback on the two options so that I can bring it back to the committee or the team to have finished that finalize that discussion and then bring you the team's recommendation for a school calendar. And before we start that discussion, when you provide your feedback, the other thing that's not on this calendar yet, but was a conversation that the team has had is potentially looking at adding a half day professional learning day. So a half day of attendance for students in the morning. And then in the afternoon, having a block of time for professional learning. What we are doing with that is seeing if we have more time, three hours rather than 75 minutes after school. If we have more time built into the day for professional learning, if we are able to, what we're able to accomplish with that, we fill that with that block of time, we'd be able to accomplish a bit more than we are in a 75 minute professional learning session after school. And so we'd be able to look at tackling some of the big things we've got coming up. You heard from Pam Shaw about the S E L committee working together. They're working on big topics of social emotional learning as well as why am I blanking? Social emotional learning and culturally responsive practices. And then soon we'll be bringing on student engagement opportunities as well. You know, in a few minutes, I'll talk about a potential new math curricular resource. That's another big thing that we're looking at. And so we're looking at how can we continue to optimize potential professional learning time, given the big nuggets we have coming up.
Angela, can I ask a question? What's the frequency of the half day? Is it, how many half days are we talking? Is it just the one?
For this year, we were just looking at implementing one to see how it works.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood.
So yeah, putting in one gathering data, that survey data I talked about from our 75 minute sessions. You would gather data also from that half day session so that we could see if our teachers were seeing a difference in that professional learning rather in addition to the 75 minutes that we have.
So then you just answered my question. In addition to not in replacement of, so the, yeah, okay.
Just really allows us to try a different model. It's one that the State Board of Ed calendar allows for what they call school. It's one that the State Board of Ed calendar allows for what they call school improvement half-days. So I think as Angela was saying, and I think said, well, we're, we'd, we'd like to try that as an additional professional development opportunity for our staff.
So I think you've mentioned this before, Martha, the state only allows five full days, if I'm remembering correctly, but.
Four institute days and five half-days, I believe, right, Angela, in the public school calendar? Full days, if your school day is longer than five hours, there's a, there's a formula that goes into being able to use the half-days.
We, we're using all of the full-day institute days already. That's already in the calendar. And so this would be another half a day on top of that, in addition to the, whatever it is, six or whatever, seventy-five-minute PD. So just trying to get some, get like, I think you just said, three hours, like three hours of additional professional development, essentially.
Correct.
Sorry, if you already said this, sorry, Wes. Where's the placement of this half-day in the school year? Are we talking early or in the middle or at the end of the year?
So we were looking at that and working on that, be towards the end of the year. And the reason behind that is we have institute days in August. Then we have seventy-five-minute professional learning sessions as well as the sixty-minute building sessions in September. We have another institute day in October. And then we have the seventy-five-minute, sixty-minute in November. December is a shorter month. January, we come back. It's also a shorter, it's a little bit shorter depending on how the winter breaks work. February, we have an institute day. March, we have spring break. So that would leave, if we're going to put that half-day, it would leave looking at April or May, but leaning probably towards May because April is state testing. So if doing it in May, topics that we would look at would be looking at professional learning that may need to happen for the upcoming year. So if we get to the end of the year and we're going to implement, say, a new SEL curricular resource or a new SEL philosophy. We would use that half-day for the district learning for that philosophy to plan for August. If we were looking at alignment of curricular resources, we take our data from the year's benchmarking terms. To see where we're at with teaching the standards, to see where our students are ending in the spring benchmarking time. So we could talk about what needs are going to happen at the beginning of the year in the fall. And we would plan for that vertically, meaning our first grade team would meet with our second grade team. Second grade would meet with third grade. So structuring that so that you're able to meet with the grade that's sending students to you in the upcoming year. We might also look at any professional learning that might happen for curricular resources that we currently use. Having looked at the year, seen how the curricular resources continue to work for us and looking at making any adjustments that are needed. So that when placing a professional learning session towards the end of the year, you're looking at utilizing it for the professional learning that would be occurring for the upcoming year.
In terms of the, I'm sorry, go ahead. And I was just gonna say, in terms of the half-day, it would be great if, if, if we do move in that direction. That we would be able to perhaps work with the Parks and Rec Department, much like we did right now for the snow days. To provide some coverage for the remainder of the school day. I know many families who rely on school day out programs. On these institute days because they are not often days that the, you know, traditional workforce is off, although I do recognize they're usually flanked. By some given holidays, but perhaps if we do go that route, it would be good. In terms of the overall calendar, I find it really difficult to wrap my head around ending in May. I also come from a completely different, like, post-Labor Day start. I know, I don't know how our educators feel, but I know many educators and families tend to take. Personal time and vacation time in some of the later warmer summer months. Also for families that rely on summer camps around here, the summer camps are staffed primarily by college students. And so a lot of summer camps, there's often a gap. The Riverside one tends to align with District ninety-six's calendar. But not every family enrolls their children in the Riverside camp. There are other nearby camps in the suburbs that parents rely on in the summer. And many of them do not start until sometime in mid-June. They tend to follow D ninety-five. But again, more than aligning with a district, they're waiting for college students to come home from college, which they are not. Usually home in early, in late May. So those are some of the challenges, I think, with the starting earlier. I recognize, I mean, we just went through the Hollywood project. I recognize the ability to start construction earlier, but I don't know if that outweighs. Some of the other negatives I see with starting early. I don't know how other board members feel, but I just, I had thoughts on it. So.
I was going to ask the same thing, Stephanie. I appreciate you bringing that up.
No, I was thinking that too with swim. We, we had swim issues last summer because all the college students went away. And there was, and they had to spread out the kids because of the COVID. And so there was no one to teach. And so they had to stop the classes. I thank you for asking that. Yeah.
No, I mean, I, I, I understand that concern, but I guess the, also on the, on the flip side though, too, at the later months. I do know the camps also, things wrap up earlier because kids are going back to school. College students are going back to school. I, I personally think it'd be more advantageous. I mean, we have a lot of families that do have. Kids that will be going, that are in both high school and junior high, even some grade school. I do know that has been a, an issue for many parents, like that the, the start times don't always necessarily line up. The only thing that I had, the only concern I have about this calendar is that it ends on the day after Labor Day. And that's the last day of school, or I'm sorry, Memorial Day, that's the last day of school. I'm just wondering. Is there a way to just basically eliminate that? Because I'm, for some reason, I would just have, my instinct would be that the attendance would be very low that day.
And that was something that Dr. Ryan Joy and I had looked at and talked about as well. We would, if that's the, if that was the calendar that we settled on, we would need to look at probably adjusting the start. Like moving the start day to day. We can't add an extra day so that we're here the Tuesday, Wednesday. Can't just reduce a day so that like, just take that away and end on Friday. Because we have to have a minimum number of student attendance days. So that Tuesday puts us right at that minimum of one hundred seventy-six student attendance days.
Yeah, Angela, and I. There's benefits and advantages in both in terms of the summer camps. Is there any option, and I realize this is asking your committee to do more work, but look at just ending on June second. So that that week after Memorial Day is actually a full, full week? Or is that just a bridge too far?
That goes to, that goes to adding days to the calendar, which then becomes a contractual issue. Because of the way the contract is worded for days in the school calendar. But I don't know, Martha, do you have anything you'd like to, sorry, anything you'd like to add to that?
Well, I assume.
Yeah, you could, you could start on the twenty-second, right? You just move, just shift to the days in the calendar, I think is what you're going at, Joel.
Yes, that is exactly what I'm going.
Then we're out of sync with, with RB, but.
Right.
Which that.
By, by three days.
But we've always been out of sync with RB, so.
For the last seven years at least, yes, yes. Well, and, and someone who has, I have kids in RB and D ninety-six. From that convenience factor that I, I could see benefits, but honestly, I've always thought. RB starts too early and ends too soon. It just, especially for this area. I mean, May is still chilly.
I, I'm also one like Dan. I don't, I hope I'm not cutting you off or anything, Dan, but I, I also have one in each district. And I've always thought RB starts too early. And yeah, it's cold. I, I, would I rather take a trip in August, probably, but.
Not quite as cold as it is today, but it is.
It really hasn't affected my family. I'm only one family, obviously. There are probably people that have a lot of varying opinions, but.
Sure. So, so can, can I just ask, Angela, can I just ask a question? I mean, what, what is, what, what is the, um, the, the committee's recommendation? I mean, what is their preference for this? And I guess what would their, and why, why would they go with one calendar or the other?
That is a wonderful question. The team doesn't have a preference. They, much like this discussions, the benefits and challenges to both calendars, which is why. As talking as a team, talking with Martha, we thought that it would be good to bring it to you. Since it is an advisory team, we thought it would be good to bring it to the board to see if there was a strong feeling one way or other from the board. Your conversations sound very similar to the conversations the team had. And that, again, there are many benefits and many challenges to both calendars.
Do, do we know, was there a stated rationale for why we haven't synced with RB in the past?
So I can probably share just what I, what I think I understand to be history and sort of start with this idea that. Going to this earlier start date, matching with RB is a significant shift, I believe, for the, you know, pre-K eight community. And not one that we would want to just do automatically or do lightly. I think it's fair to say that in some ways, bringing a committee together, bringing a team together to talk about this is, is good. We want this, this shared input. Kind of, we were surprised that there were some teachers that thought that maybe this seemed like a better way. To run the academic calendar. So the history, my understanding from how elementaries and high schools really got sort of separated was this idea that high schools tried to move toward. Getting final exams in before winter break for kids. That that came out as a strong recommendation on dealing with stress levels with students that, that they went home for a winter break and had to study for finals the whole time. So high schools started to start earlier to get a full semester in before a traditional winter break. And that sort of put elementaries in positions often to say, and I'm speaking of communities around here, and we actually gathered up calendars for our whiskey districts. And, and all of that to try to get some of this comparative understanding. Is that elementary districts felt that was too early for elementary and for families and represented such a shift. And elementary is kind of stuck with this third, fourth week in August. High schools kind of went to this second, third week in August. And I think there are many high school elementary districts that now have this disparity. So it's a really interesting question. It is a shift. You know, one of the things we've talked, is it, you know, do we want to ask the community? You know, is it a survey question? Again, when we, we know when we ask, we have to sort of be ready to, you know, be responsive to that kind of feedback. Not that we have to then go forward with that. It's, it's always tricky to do a survey and that people who feel strongly respond. And sometimes those that are indifferent don't respond, but that might be another option. I think even understanding from our staff. We know some staff have thought that this would be a good idea. I don't know if we think the majority, right, Angela?
That's correct. That is, that's absolutely correct. I actually did receive an email from a teacher today who was expressing. Opinions about an earlier start and just the unexpectedness of that as well. So I don't know if it's the majority that does think that it should be early.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, because wouldn't that affect, you know, possibly if there's a, you know, teacher or staff member who has children in another district? Who, you know, then if we become the outlier, does that cause issues for them, you know?
The other piece of information, you know, we looked at the feeder districts as well to see when they were starting. Or proposing starting for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. And Comarx proposing August thirtieth due to construction. And Brookfield Grange is proposing the week, the same week of the twenty-fourth. I can't remember what the exact date was off the top of my head.
I would love to know what the community would think about this, because I feel like it's kind of a big shift, just to be like, oh, let's try it. I, I, I don't have an opinion. I don't. I don't, it doesn't affect my life personally, but I, I don't know if I could make this decision, because I feel like there's so many other factors, like camps and programming. And, you know, I, I just feel like there's a lot of, a lot of puzzle pieces that you, I'm, I'm worried if we make this move too quickly. That a lot of those situations then become, you know, troublesome for families.
And to your point about moving too quickly. If we go the route of hearing from the community, hearing from the staff members, which I think is a great route to take. I would suggest then that we go with the later start date for this upcoming school year. And take the time next year then to look into the possibility of an earlier start time for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Yeah, I was going to say, there are probably people. Oh, sorry. Yeah, there are probably people that have already planned their August this year. We've already applied, you know, the, the brochures come in January or February, and I'm sure there are people that have paid for programs. And that may be wondering, wait, what do I do now? So I, I kind of like that idea, Angela, about the exploration and taking time to ask.
Yeah, and during the exploration, can we, can we talk to the other feeder districts about it as well? Because I feel like it, it would be great if, if people, you know, if we decide to move in that direction, you know. It would be great to move together or not move together. I just feel like if we don't all shift in one way, it just kind of create, you know. It's our, you know, all districts are a part of the community and, you know, feeding into the high schools. So it all kind of. I don't know, it just seems, feels like there's a lot of connected parts that I really do feel like this would take some time to explore.
I, I, and I don't, don't mean to spend too much time, too much more time on this, but I, I'm. I'm, I'm no, I don't know that I've heard any benefits of this shift other than we would be in sync with the high school. Was I missing something or is that essentially, that's the benefit is that we'd be in sync with the high school?
Um, that is one of the benefits, the other ones being that. What we notice in classrooms is that students start to check out in June. So having them finish before June helps prevent that. As well as if there were construction projects happening that following summer, it would present the opportunity.
You did mention that. I, I guess, I, I, it did go through my mind, I must admit, when, when you mentioned kids starting to check out in June. I, I do wonder, would they be checking out in late May?
Yeah.
All the same. Is, is it more of a short-time itis problem or is it a calendar problem?
I think it's just at the end of the year problem, frankly.
I think it's the approach of the last day of school. Yeah, I don't think it's the date on the calendar.
I, I don't think so. And, you know, with, I taught block schedule too for the high schools and we never had an issue. We never started the middle of August because we were able to get, I think, I feel like it has to do with the structure of the high schools too, and their own schedule being traditional. That they have to do a certain amount of material in a slower, different wave. And so I think that block schedule districts might have different start dates, you know, versus the forty-five-minute districts and those kinds of things. But I, I kind of am with Dan, like, well, let's, I'm not sure I've heard anything that convincing, but I'm willing to learn, but, you know.
Well, and, and I, I, again, I didn't want to bring too much discussion on it. We are at nine oh seven.
Can I just ask one?
I don't have to start work tomorrow until nine fifteen, but I don't know that I want to keep talking until then.
So I will just, I will go and to the team and we'll look at our normal start date for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We'll put in the half-day professional learning date, so you could see where that would fall on the calendar. And then have that for you for the board meeting in two weeks.
I'd support that, Angela.
Yeah, I mean, just because I would, I would like to know if we're going to make a shift like this. I'm, I agree with Linda, but I don't think we can do that. And come to a conclusion in a timely fashion to Sherry's point, like, I've already gotten people asking, when, when's our calendar coming out? And people are trying to plan trips and stuff for late summer. And, and honestly, personally, I was, I was about to book a trip for that first week of winter break that I assumed would have been the nineteenth. But now it's the last week of December and the first week of January. So that one kind of surprised me too. And I was just kind of curious about the last week in March being spring break. So not to belabor it too much more tonight, I think we'd have more dialogue, but I was sort of expecting if we moved up a week. Winter break and spring break would have followed, but those dates are, are still the same. So I'm kind of curious about how that would work out from like. Mental cognitive capability, like does the space scene and all that kind of stuff, but. We're already at nine oh nine. I don't.
I can give you a really quick answer to winter and spring break. We do like, we do match up to RB for our winter and spring break. Ask practice has been that we go off of their established calendar for the two breaks. So they establish that and we followed it.
That's really important.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would agree. Yeah.
And there is a tradition of holding that last week in March as spring break. It's very regional. I think it also links to our state testing model, et cetera. So I think that would, would stay, even if there was some shuffling of beginning and end date.
Okay, I was trying to go back and look and I could have swore we used to do the third week, but I, I couldn't find anything that, that did that. So I, I might be just not remembering correctly or something.
I don't, you might be right, because my birthday is March twenty-third and we were on vacation on, we were on spring break on my birthday one year. So.
That's my birthday, Stephanie. That's funny.
So I think, I don't know, Wesley, but I don't know that we should go by, you know, my.
Just for you, Stephanie, we're going to change the calendar so that you.
Let's put all, all board member birth dates on the school calendar so that we can be properly celebrated.
Mine is the week of Thanksgiving, so I already got that covered.
Oh, that's interesting. Yeah, I'm just not sure we should be surprising people after this year. You know, we're, we're barely getting back to stability and I think let's take our time and do it right.
Yeah, great.
So then it sounds like we're all in agreement on the next steps for the calendar. If you'd like, I'll move on. So then it sounds like we're all in agreement on the next steps for the calendar. If you'd like, I'll move on to the math curricular review.
Yeah.
Yes, thanks.
So we are, we have a five-year cycle to review our curricular resources, which doesn't necessarily mean we adopt new resources. But it's more about exploring to make sure our current resources are meeting our needs. So currently Math and Focus was adopted in August two thousand sixteen. And it has been five years and we've been reviewing whether or not it's been meeting our needs. Through our work the past three years with the Metro Chicago of Mathematics Initiative, the MCMI Coaching, we've seen that it doesn't fully meet our needs. Not that it can't meet our needs with adjustments, and these are adjustments we're making with our assessments, but that it hasn't fully met our needs. So we did take this year, we are taking this year to review other mathematics programs to see if there might be a program that would better meet our needs and require less adjustment of assessment work to align to the standards. So a math team of teachers have gathered together, have come together. It is a team that is representative of every elementary grade level, K through five, has a special education representation and math interventionist and advanced learning represented as well. We're reviewing four math programs. The current edition of Math and Focus, because our edition is actually from two thousand twelve. And they have a two thousand twenty edition, the two thousand twelve edition is slowly becoming obsolete and we're losing our access to certain resources with it. So we're, we're reviewing the twenty-twenty edition of Math and Focus, I Ready Mathematics, Illustrative Mathematics and Bridges Mathematics. And those programs are picked as, because their programs are being used in districts that the MCMI coaches work with, as well as in some of the districts in our whiskey consortium. We're looking to narrow those four choices down to two. And then we'll have vendors come in to share about their products, to help us dig deeper into the products, the resources, the enrichment, the supports, all of that, so that we can fully see what the products have to offer. From there, we would look at potentially piloting curricular resources if we were looking at something other than Math and Focus. And that pilot would occur hopefully in March or April. Should all of that work on that timeline, having vendors come in, determining whether or not we need to pilot, piloting in March and April, then if we were interested in a program outside of Math and Focus, I would come to the board, the team would come to the board with a recommendation at our May Cal meeting. And I just wanted to make sure you were updated on that before we got too far down the pipeline with that curricular review.
I, I, I'm wondering, now you're, you're saying that current Math and Focus does not meet our needs. I mean, could you just quickly elaborate where we needed to go or what was, what we were looking for in the next program?
Yes, so what we're seeing, when Math and Focus was adopted in two thousand sixteen, District ninety-six was first coming into working with the Common Core State Standards as well. And so the programmers reviewed and it appeared to align to the standards, the Common Core State Standards. What we have found in learning more about Common Core State Standards and working with Math and Focus over the six years is that it's actually not aligned. We have, for instance, our fourth grade curriculum teaches more fifth grade standards than fourth grade standards. And so we have students who are not developmentally ready and haven't had some of the foundational learning to be successful in those fourth grade standards. And so then they score low on assessments and teachers say, my kids need help. My kids need intervention. My kids can't do this. But they don't really need intervention. They're not really tier-two kids, because it's not grade level standards. It's not, they're not being instructed at an appropriate level. And fourth grade is where we see it the most, but we see it at other grade levels also. So what we've been working on for the past two years is actually rewriting many of the assessments for Math and Focus, so that they are aligned to grade level standards. But also they assess what we're teaching, because the other thing we found is that there were questions on the assessments that may not have really been taught through the lessons in that unit. And so there was a lot of supplement going on also to make sure kids were ready for the assessment that was in the Math and Focus book. So part of our looking at Math and Focus twenty-twenty edition is to see if they have better aligned their resources. They say they have, but what we know about any curricular resources, they're salespeople. They're going to say what they want you to, what they know you want to hear. So we're actually digging into it and looking to ensure that any resource we look at or potentially explore would have what we call the habits of mind, or mathematical practices that we want students to engage in, but that they're also aligned to grade level standards. So we look at chapters across the different units. For instance, multiplication is really important in third grade. We're looking at multiplication units in all four areas, all four resources to see how they align their multiplication unit at third grade to the standards for third graders.
I guess I, I appreciate what you're saying. I think that it's a little disheartening. It seems like we'd switch math curriculum every five years because it's our time to review. And then I, I guess the disheartening thing is that when we heard about this program, you know, five years ago, they said, oh, yes, it's aligned. How do we know, I mean, besides what you're saying about the in-depth look, that we were told that the teachers did a, a chapter-wide look the last time. So how will we know that it's really different, I guess? That it's really going to be meeting the standards, because you're right, vendors will say whatever they need to say, that it's aligned. I guess that's what's disheartening, because buying a new curriculum is expensive and it takes time for this, more importantly, it takes time for the staff to adjust and the families to adjust. So I think I, I'm a bit cautious, just having switched recently, that I want to make sure that we're doing this correctly. Because we heard the similar talk last time, so I guess I'm a little disheartened. I obviously want them to have what they need, but it is a little troubling to hear, so.
Absolutely. I think that our knowledge and the teacher's knowledge with standards are a little bit deeper. And so we're able to look with a different lens than maybe the team prior had explored with Math and Focus. I will say that one of the things I'm also looking at is when Dr. Brownlow had adopted Math and Focus, worked with her team to adopt Math and Focus, one of the things she shared in her presentation was other districts who were utilizing Math and Focus also. So I have been working to explore with those districts, are they even still using Math and Focus? And we have found that there are a number of those districts that are no longer using Math and Focus as well. So I'm not sure why or where a breakdown with Math and Focus. And I would like to say, I promise you it won't happen again, but I can't make that promise. What I can promise is that we are truly digging into it deeper. We did even just readjust our meeting schedule so that we can provide ourselves more time to ensure we're digging deeper. So that we are, we are addressing that concern. I will say, like Carnegie Math, I know you said that it feels like you adopt a curriculum every five years. Carnegie Math, I've talked with the junior high teachers, they love Carnegie Math. It's meeting our needs. So, you know, when we review Carnegie Math, we're not reviewing it to adopt a new math resource. So it is possible. It just did not happen with Math and Focus.
Well, and I mean, Carnegie also is used at RB, so the longitudinal, you know, relevance of that is going to be useful in that they use it nine, ten, eleven, you know, so for that one, I, I also understand why there's a verticality necessity to that. It's just, yeah, I'm I just, I'll, I'm here to listen. I'm, I'm excited to hear what you have to say, but it is a little troubling, so.
Slightly different question, Angela, is if, if you were able to evaluate and make decisions by May, is that enough time for the staff to, to learn the new program without a significant lift for the new year?
We would end up, and this is where professional learning has to work together with all the different initiatives we have going on. If we were to adopt a new curricular resource for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we would look at summer work, summer curricular work that could happen. We would look at August institute days for the initial professional learning. And then we would do follow-up professional learning, definitely at the October Institute Day, but possibly utilizing seventy-five minute learning sessions as well. The thing with professional learning with new curricular resources is you don't want to actually pour it all into them right up front. Because they really don't know what they don't know until they start getting into the textbook. So you give, when doing professional learning with a new curricular resource, you'd start out with the basics and start out with the foundational pieces of the curriculum, and then you're doing those regular check-ins with professional learning and then adding more as you're continuing to go, so that you're not piling on too much and they don't know how to use the different pieces when it comes time to use them.
So I, if I can paraphrase, some of what I'm hearing is you want a certain amount of learning while doing.
Correct.
Enables better implementation.
Correct, yes. The other option we are looking at too is that if we if we get to May, we find we want a different curricular resource, there's a possibility of piloting that resource for a full year to pilot the whole resource instead of just two units of a resource. So that's another option that we can look at too, again, given looking at the different initiatives we have and the limited amount of professional learning time that may need to be a route we take also. So there are a couple of things we're looking at as we continue to continue through this process.
Okay, and seriously consider the piloting, because I know we did that with, not with math, but I believe the the English, the literature curriculum a few years back as well. And ask the teachers how that went.
Okay, thank you.
Options.
I think that's it for me, if there are no other questions.
It, just, just a specific call out, you did make a note in there that regardless of what program is recommended or decided, we gotta make a change, because what we're using right now is not supported. So a change is inevitable, but I, I, I'll just, I agree with Sherry, it is a little troubling to hear that the alignment wasn't there, but it's kind of irrelevant, because we're gonna have to make a decision on something different, whether it's Math and Focus or something else, we do need to make a change.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, anything else from the Education Committee tonight? Great, fantastic, Angela, thank you. Thanks to everyone on the committee. A lot going on on the Education this, uh, today, this meeting. All right, next up is the Personnel Committee.
Right, so Dan, as you pointed out earlier, I am watching the time as well as nine twenty-two. People are gonna start getting exhausted. This is not a light topic, but I will, so I don't, I don't want to blow through it. I'm gonna maybe gloss over some of the kindergarten stuff, since it was somewhat tackled, but we can talk about it if you want. I'll just, I'll kind of recap it from the memo here. So with the, the discussion around full-day kindergarten, if we were to vote in favor of moving forward with that, that would add the four additional full-time kindergarten teachers that we would need in order to staff full-day sections to what we need. Three additional specials teachers, art, music and PE, which was already evaluated earlier. And potentially some midday supports for one supervision and like other, just other support needs in the district. I'll just, I'll kind of pause there. Is there any more discussion anybody wants to have around that? Specific to pre-K, or not pre-K, kindergarten, full-day kindergarten? Okay. So then I'm gonna move into, we've got coaching, mental health and social behavioral support, nursing services and Spanish language instruction. Uh, is kind of the core things here. So Martha attached some memos, kind of highlighting what these are. I'll just kind of summarize them. Martha, if you want to add anything in more detail, feel free, and then I can just kind of open it for questions. So I'll just sort of hit these at a high level to start the conversation and we can go from there. So the coaching one here is really just to add an additional support, additional person that would be a dedicated coach like Ms. Hickey is currently and is well-regarded and well-supported in what she's doing and, and much appreciated in the additional supports that the teachers have. She's currently supporting the entire district, so adding one more person definitely makes sense to me, just from a personal perspective, having somebody that can kind of dedicate their time to learning all of this stuff and supporting people and, and do that as their full-time job and be focused on it is extremely beneficial. So I, I'm in, personally in full support of that one. That, that's pretty much what it is there. And the mental health and social behavioral support, adding a school psychologist. So as you guys can imagine, we, we've even had some confidential stuff that's popped up this year that we've talked about, which is a little bit, as Martha noted, we're, we're kind of seeing that Angela's brought it up, Martha has brought it up to us, that we're just, we're seeing things in the schools that are heightened compared to previous years. And just looking, with my wife being in mental health, I, I hear about this a lot at all age groups from young to old of just the different mental health supports that are needed out there and the struggles that people are going through and, and all that can just issues that the pandemic has brought on in a variety of capacities. The nursing services is to not add a staff, but really just like accommodate one of our nurses going back to get her bachelors to be an RN. So there's a suggestion there in using some temporary services just to help with that workload, to allow her to get her bachelors. And then that would provide having an R, an official RN at every single school that we have and Spanish language instruction slash EL services. We just have a growing population here, so this, this is kind of falls into that equity bucket, in my opinion. Of, we just don't have the support services needed to facilitate EL students and native English speakers that are trying to learn Spanish at the same time. So this is just to increase a halftime person, essentially, it was what it would be added to the district to facilitate the current Spanish language sections, so that our staff member that does the English learners can do that more full-time, and then we can continue with what we already have with Spanish language. So those are kind of the core ones. And then the last one, Associated Director for Student Services and Special Education, would be related to a conversation we've had a couple of meetings ago about bringing somebody on to work in tandem with Pam as she goes through her last year with the district and get somebody, almost like a job shadow type thing, so that they could really get a good feel of the job and we can have a nice smooth transition for all of the many different things that Pam does for us with special education and, and everything else that, that kind of goes within her job description. So hopefully you guys all had a chance to read the memos that go into a little bit more detail than that. But that's kind of the high-level version of it, and I'll just kind of pause there. Martha, would you like to add anything before opening it? And or if not, any questions from any other board members on any of the suggested staff increases for the next school year, twenty twenty, what is it, twenty-two, twenty-three?
No, Wesley, I think you did a great job with the overview and a lot of detail's been added from Pam, from Angela, from April, May, the, the principals in particular, directors, where there's been a, a need identified in, in those identified areas.
So, so is the school psychologist, that's, that's a net addition, correct?
That's an addition, right.
So do we not have a school psychologist presently, or?
We have three. This would be moving it to four.
So in this, so how, how is the load distributed differently, I guess?
Pam, do you wanna, do you wanna talk about that? I don't know if Pam is, I know she's still there as an icon.
Sure, hi. Presently, we have one psychologist at Hauser. And we have two psychologists who handle the elementary buildings. One covers Ames and Hollywood and one covers, I'm sorry, one covers Ames of Life and one covers Central and Hollywood. The increase in the mental health issues that we've had this year have really put them in a position where they are having to spend incredible amounts of time hands-on with students, which is part of their role, and they definitely like to be part of that role. But at the same time, they, it makes it difficult for them to evaluate students, to get them the supports that they may need. Some of these students who they are working with are students new to us with special concerns. Students who have not experienced these concerns before. So that has really been taxing on them. We've had to contract out a bit of help this year, but again, it is still extremely taxing. And I think to have them directly involved with the students and then seeing that through to the evaluation process is important. It also has limited the time that they've been able to work on our MTSS process with the interventionists and the grade level teams with their data review meetings. They're not involved as they should be. And we do have a, a very sufficient number, I think at this time, of social workers. But at this time, it's the psychologist position that I feel is in need of increase. We, we did have a bit more a few years ago, and of course, that was before the pandemic and we thought we could, we could cut back a little bit there, but given our situation now, that it's not something that is working for us at this time and, and for the students. Any other questions? Any other questions about that?
I would just add, this is not, there is a national issue with this, like mental health specialists of whatever nature are at capacity. Like, we do not have enough people that understand this right now for everything that people are going through. I think I mentioned earlier, like, my wife is in this industry and like her business is exploding with people that need resources and children included. And just not enough capacity to take all the people that want the services. And I, I think just from kind of knowing the local staff that we have and the engagement that we have within the district, like the social workers and psychologists we have, I mean, they are overloaded with people that need some of this assistance at varying degrees. And I, I believe the social workers and the psychologists also are the ones that kind of monitor and evaluate and facilitate our like IEPs and 504s in addition with other people too. So there's, there's already that that was there and now we've got this added on top of it. So it, it really is from, from my understanding and talking to a couple of those that are in our district, like there, there's just been a real explosion and in observations of additional services needed here. So I, I think this one is a a much-needed add to staff to, to support our students personally.
I'm, I'm going to completely echo what Wesley said. I mean, this is, this is something that we, I mean, it's, it's a national thing that's going on and COVID has not helped at all. And we have the resources right now to help the kids and to like provide this additional service to allow us to hire another staff member to free up time for other staff members so they can spend the adequate amount of time with each student that they need to. This is, I, I don't see why we shouldn't even be, I mean, this is a necessity that I think is not really optional.
Yeah, I'm in agreement on that. I mean, all, every one of us, no matter what your age, has been, it's been through some kind of trauma. That's what I'm reading. And, you know, if it also helps those psychologists do the evaluations that they need to do and keep in mind, if, if full-day kindergarten happens, you'll have a larger student base that may or may not need supports and they also have to be evaluated besides their, their brief kindergarten evaluation and who knows what kind of time will be spread for that as well. So I, I agree with both of you.
And of course, these are not votes or anything like that tonight, so we, you know, we can have more debate on that, but it is one of those where Martha, I'm trying to think, we, we did talk about timelines, like we, we do need to make a decision relatively soon, just so that we can get a job posting up and then start getting candidates in and do interviews over the summer and stuff like that. But I don't recall exactly when, when, if, when do you need our either go-no-go decision on these, if, if we decide to do it, so you can get your postings up, like, what was the timeline for that?
Yeah, so I, you know, at the February sixteenth board meeting, we're scheduled to take a vote on full-day kindergarten or not, so that's going to address that for
Right, yeah.
Teachers and, and three specials teachers. I would like there to be a sort of a special personnel report at the February sixteenth meeting, then where the board could not approve people for these positions, but approve these positions so that we could go ahead and do these postings. The board has through consensus approved the idea of the associate director because we have, we have posted that and we are moving forward with an interview process already there. So that's already in the works. I'll just make one other comment. It doesn't sound like more rationale is needed around the school psychologists, but they are truly a multi-talented, you know, group, the, the individuals that we have in the district are wonderful, but psychologists, they do, as you've all pointed out, they do evaluations and help with eligibility and identification for children with who might need an IEP. They're very well-versed in looking at student learning data. That's kind of in their typical role. And then what, they are also very good at the social behavioral interventions, crafting behavior intervention plans for students, understanding the function of why children are struggling behaviorally. And that is really what's kind of tipped the balance for them this year is that they are really very much hands-on, on-call, doing a lot of work with teams and with children individually to, to do some of that problem solving.
And, and I'm sorry to cut you off, Martha.
That's all.
And also, I just, I know we're going to get into this a little bit in the next topic, but also regarding the finance committee. This has been something that we've already evaluated, looking at hiring all these additional head, this additional headcount in the budgets and the long-range projections. And I can just say, in, in, in short, it is definitely something that we can absorb as a district based on our oper, our current operating expenses. So we'll get more into that in a little bit.
Also, like Jim was pointing out, had shared with me and Pam is aware too, that we do have some additional money now coming to us through the American Rescue Plan that's related to individual disabilities education. About sixty thousand dollars, it's probably going to be one-year money. But again, that could certainly offset in the, in the short term and additional psychologists. Right, Jim, am I right on the numbers there roughly?
Right, right. We can get an exact number for you. That's close.
And right, Jim will represent all that in the projections. Which I think is next, right? But happy to answer any more questions about the personnel. It's, it's a significant shift to be thinking about these added positions.
Yeah, exactly. So I don't want to gloss over it in eight, eighteen minutes or whatever it's been. I can't remember when we started, but because it is, it is a lot of added personnel, but it aligns with a lot of other things we're doing. So i- if you guys have questions about it between now and the next meeting, feel free to reach out to myself and Martha. Pose any questions that you have, but.
Right, I, I think we saw the costs of the, the positions associated with full-day kindergarten. I'm sure we'll see the costs attached to these or approximate costs when we're looking to vote, or that would be something of interest to me.
Actually, they're all in the financial projections. I think Jim has a specific appendix to the projections that deals with the personnel increases specifically.
Yeah. Yeah, so I've been, I've been, Dave and I met with Martha and Jim to kind of collaborate on both personnel and finance together. So all that has been baked into what we're about to talk about here in just a minute. So those are called out, Dan, like if you.
Okay.
In there specifically. All right. Thank you.
All right, then without further ado, we will go to the finance committee.
Thanks, Dan. So I know we've talked about a lot of items this, today, and it's, I don't, like Wesley said, I really don't want to gloss over the financial perspectives of this. But we have talked, looked at the, the financial cost for both full-day kindergarten and this added headcount. And so what, Jim, I've talked to Jim and I asked Jim to run some scenarios and essentially he put together three scenarios that he's going to go over in a little bit more detail. One scenario is essentially we do full-day kindergarten. We do hire all these new, this new heads count. We do all the construction for the Hauser Auditorium, Blythe, Central Hauser Campus. And then the third one is that we don't do anything. And I asked him, excuse me, I asked him to look at the long-range projections on how that's going to affect our surplus, our, my, our reserves. And so he'll go through it, but I guess the, the, the long and the short, the short answer is that we are still going to be maintaining essentially that forty percent reserve that's in policy into, I believe it's twenty thirty-one, correct, Jim? But we are going, if we did everything, we are at, still at that forty percent essentially. It's actually thirty-eight point six percent in twenty thirty-one of, with that reserve. So with that, I know Jim has a presentation and as Martha said, and Jim said, the numbers are all baked into here. And so there are the costs associated with this. So with that, though, I'm going to turn it over to Jim for the presentation.
My screen here. Here we go. As Dave said, the thirty-eight point six percent, ten years from now, sounds really precise for a ten-year estimate. And I did put that in writing and I think, well, that but, and I may still make fairly conservative estimates. So by the time we get there, it may not be that. Plus, we can adjust our budget if we have to. Oh, I'll just hit some of the highlights of the detailed report that's in the board book. I just wanted to show you where, what we thought at this time last year. That we expected last year, the one that the auditors just talked to you about, to end with eighteen point seven million in reserves in the fund balance. And the green box in the middle, you can see the eighteen point seven. And when we projected ten years out, we expected it to end at fourteen point two. So I just want to start with that and then show you how it's changed as we made different assumptions and booked another year. So there's a lot of numbers on here, but the first column there, the operating surplus gives you an idea how much every year goes into fund balance. And a lot of times we're taking it out and putting it into capital, which is the transfers out. But just on operating, we, in ten years, put thirty-six point five million and and during the same years, we got a lot of projects done and took forty-five and a half million out, put it to capital projects or debt, but the debt was really to pay for capital projects. So it's all larger projects or additions or upgrading the HPC at one time. Here's a graph of those. The ten years of of putting operating surplus and putting it into fund balance. The average over the last ten years has been three point seven million a year. The minimum was two million. And, oh, can you see that? So the least amount we did was two million in those ten years. The positions of full-day kindergarten and the psychologist and all those positions that Wesley just talked about are less than nine hundred thousand a year. It up and down a little bit based on supplies. So if this kind of trend continues, regardless of what I project, which is really conservative, we could expect to to put a surplus in the fund balance of a million dollars a year, I would think. Maybe more. So if, when we close out last year, that was four point seven million being added, that number jumps up to twenty-one point eight. Now, we had assumed that we'd be adding a little bit to fund balance. So that number goes up three point one million, not the full four point seven. So an improvement to the last projections. And then every red number all the way out to the right goes up by that three point one million. It just shifts the whole thing up. And so then FY thirty would, would end at seventeen point four without doing any new assumptions. Let's see. Why, so one question, why did we add three point one million to the operating fund balance? We were really really conservative on property taxes last year. We thought that there could be difficulty in people paying their taxes. The property taxes. So we expected, we really knocked it down to almost what it was in two thousand eight when there was the great recession. And it didn't happen. So the taxes still got paid, even if they're a little bit late. So when I checked in the beginning of February, it's ninety-seven, almost ninety-eight percent already and there's still time, there'll still be more trickling in that are late. So that's a big difference of when you just, you assume, well, that's just going to be the way it is for ten years too. It's been that way for ten years. It should be that way for ten years. So now we're adding basically four percent to each year going out. But talking, talking just about the, the one we booked, the one that's history now, that was eight hundred thousand of the three point one million. And then there were quite a few expenditures that came in favorable and a lot of it is due to the unusual year. There were a couple of positions in the budget that didn't get filled, as well as a lot of the stipends didn't get paid out. And some other overtime and salaries that didn't get paid. Which also has the benefit, the benefit of the benefits being favorable. So if you're underspending in salaries, your benefit costs lowers also. In addition to salaries and benefits, we underspent in maintenance repair. Seven hundred thousand, if you remember, we put one point one million in every year. And when there's a lot of construction going on, we're not looking at spending, doing these other intense projects at the same time. We, our special ed spending went down and just general supplies for everybody were, were favorable. So now that FY twenty-one, FY twenty-one is audited and closed, I look forward to the next ten years. So adjusting some of the assumptions, and the biggest thing is that the pandemic didn't affect tax collections like we were afraid it might. So putting in a more realistic collection percentage added two, two and a half million to those ten years going out. In August, Illinois passed a law that increases the tax levy we do by the amount of refunds that were paid out the previous year. And the first number they gave us is two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So I assume that for every year, that it looks similar to the refunds we've done. They go up and down, but that's, you know, almost two and a half million dollars over those ten years also that weren't in last year's projections. The CPI, the inflation rate came in at seven percent. And that's the number that gets used for doing our next tax levy. But we're in a tax cap district, so that we'll be using five percent. It's, it's the you can't go over five percent without the voters being involved. But so we, if we go for the maximum like we usually do, that'd be five percent. And then that bomb, that extra probably three and a half percent that I added to next year, that, that makes them higher every year from then on. So that was a difference of eight, eight and a half billion dollars. So those, the thirteen million dollars would really take that red line up high. And then we added to these projections, new expenditures. And that's full-day kindergarten and extra teachers, because we're still on track to like, like park a two-section school. And psychologists and other new expenditures. And then the transfers is the, you saw from that one table that the other way that you bring the fund balance down is to transfer it to non-operating to do capital projects. So we moved more than I knew about last February, three million to, to the projects that we approved for this past summer that just finished a couple of months ago. And I put in a number of five and a half million, which is the latest estimate of doing the Central Hauser Campus.
Yes. Can I, can I just ask one quick question about that transfer for the Central Hauser Campus before you move on? I was wondering, that, wasn't that, I was trying to figure out, was that on the lower end of the estimates for that projected expenditure or is that in the middle? Like, I feel like it was in the low end, but I understand you have to pick a number. It's not, it's not like we know, but I was just curious.
So originally, I think when we talked to Lakota, it was four to eight million, four to ten million, something like that. I think they're narrowing in on it more so. So it's at the lower end, but I think there's a higher confidence in the number. And if we were to prove what five and a half million based on the design and what we think we need to have done, if it, if they calculate seven million, then we would have to, you know, present that and decide at the time when I could adjust those graphs, you know. you know, present that and decide at the time when I could adjust those graphs accordingly.
Right. No, I understand. It's, it's difficult to choose. I just, I just keep remembering like a big range and it's hard to know what, what we're going to do, but thank you.
So this is what I called scenario A. This is with everything in there from kind of the highest cost perspective. Again, you probably remember the blue line represents the forty percent of expenditures so that we want to keep our fund balance above that. This with the higher expenditures in it, so that blue line's moved up a little bit since the last time we looked at it. And also the five and a half million dollar transfer. So that's where you see this big drop from twenty point nine to fifteen point eight. We're moving five and a half million over to capital projects. And since there's one more year that's in history, which is left of this line, it's kind of District ninety six history, it's written in stone now. So to go out ten years, I added FY thirty one just by following the trends that we already built into the nine years in between. I, I still think this is a fairly conservative. I, I think the property taxes are there's that, that change has been dramatic. And then there's no reason it would go the other way. I would expect by the time we get there that we would be doing better than this line as it go out. So that's a scenario A, which includes everything we've been talking about. And scenario B, watch how the red line changes. It jumps up because we're not moving five and a half million over to capital projects. So it basically cancels that five and a half million transfer and the project, which then FY thirty, of course, that all these numbers go up by five and a half million. That's a real simple one.
Right. But can, can, can I just interject here, Jim? Do you want to stress though, this is, this is assuming we don't do the capital, like the capital projects, but it does still allow for the additional headcount.
Right.
Does, I forgot to ask too, does this take into account, I know we don't know the future of our staff compensation, but is it taken to account an assumption of percentages increased? Because they're one of our biggest expenditures. I mean, I'm assuming you did, but I mean, it's hard to know and I don't want to, you know, negotiate in public.
Well, I, I just on all expenses except like the, well, let's just say on all expenses, I use three percent and I just take every account number and three percent. And then I go back and say, well, should this one be more or less? Most of them I use three percent and then like health insurance, we've been using six percent. But it keeps coming back in it. I think the, the average was maybe two percent. I have to find, I put, it's in the detail.
No, that, that, that helps a lot. Thank you.
I use four percent, which you know, that's conservative, but it's still a lot higher than the average is done.
But to some degree, Sheri, that is kind of locked in because like you'll have people exit and come in and stuff like that. But the, the way we have the contract set up is that aggregate number that Jim says is, is going to be relatively stable because we just, our attrition rates are so low and it's really not going to impact that aggregate number too substantially.
Yeah, I wasn't speaking about number per se is more of a increase in compensation percentages.
Right. But that's locked in. Like when we did the negotiation, we locked that in for four years.
Right. I know. But since we're going to, you know, thirty one, I just figured, you know, what, what are we assuming in twenty thirty one?
Yeah, yeah, I got you. Okay.
I'm mostly thinking about
Beyond the current contract. Yeah.
Yeah. And no one, no one really knows. And I'm not, I don't expect him to know. I'm just wondering what the assumption number was and he, he really explained that very well. Thank you.
Yeah, gotcha.
Point. Sheri, I think I'd use Wesley's statement, and that is at least for the next four years, we're pretty solid on those staff expenses.
Yeah, we, it's a known at least.
We have a contract.
Right.
The hell Jim, I think your number is good. It's more the volatility that concerns me. I mean, it swings anywhere from what, two percent to positive six, depending on the year. So it's an assumption, but the reality is it's overly volatile in a way that seems kind of absurd.
Yeah, the, I found that the average for health insurance for PPO, it's gone up over five years, one point seven six percent a year. And HMO has actually gone down point eight four percent. So I, I think using four percent for ten years out is really conservative. So the next scenario, I, I took all those personnel out, you know, eight hundred thousand a year or so. And of course, that, that brings, every year goes up by about eight hundred thousand. So just so we can compare to last year, that would put FY thirty at twenty eight point one million. And I put a percentage on the last number on FY thirty one. So it get us to a seventy two percent fund balance. And that's without doing the capital or adding the new expenditures that we reviewed. Any other questions on the numbers?
You know, Jim, they're, these are reasonable. Thank you. I, I would say that they're, they're reasonable out to five years. And then after that, it gets pretty crystal ballish just because of, we don't know.
Well, we can adjust as we go if.
Oh, I'm, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not criticizing your numbers. I'm saying that we look good for out next little while, and then we should be very careful about trusting our assumptions because we just don't know.
No, but, but to, to that point though, Joel, I mean, I, I agree. Sort of beyond five years, it's, it's very much a crystal ball. And but I mean, we do this every year and so we keep it, we keep moving forward and we keep adjusting as necessary. But I guess the, the one thing I just want to stress is and take away, I, I hope that the board takes away from this is that we are in a good position. We can embark on these projects. We can hire this additional staff. We could do full day kindergarten if that's something we, we decide to do. So I, I do think that financially, it should, this, what we're looking at right now should more be a footnote because we need to start, we need, I know we focus on the kids, but this is really a footnote because we are in a very good financial position. Definitely for like next ten years and granted five to, five year, five to 10 years is still a crystal ball, but we are in a very good position.
And we currently have zero debt to.
Yes, right. Exactly.
So there, there are some of these capital improvement projects and who knows what else will pop up. Like that is always a lever we could theoretically pull, whether we choose to or not, whether the terms are favorable or not, it's a different question, but is it, you know, we have zero debt, which is kind of unusual. So it's always a
Not kind of, it is. It is unusual.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, that is unusual. So.
Given the age of our buildings though, I, I think it should be noted on a, a lot of these capital projects in the future and as, as Wes just mentioned, who knows what they may be. It's, it's, they're always going to be there with these older buildings.
Yep.
Yeah. And Jim, Jim, I wonder if I could ask you about slide four.
Sure.
That's where we have the, the dip in the middle there. I'm, I'm wondering do we know why, what was so different? It seemed like we, we were kind of consistent around four and a half, thereabouts. Actually, you're not on the same slide I'm looking at. It's, I'm looking at the FY twelve to twenty one operating surplus.
Is that table of numbers?
Yes. Let me, I'll tell you when you get there. There you go. One, one back, one back. There you go. The blue and the yellow. There we go. Should have said it that way. So, so we were, we were at earlier, it, it ran fiscal twelve, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, we're roughly four and a half million surplus. Then it took a dive and then shot back up these last two years. And I guess, do we, do we have a grasp on why it was diving? And it sounds like the, that the last two years pandemic expenses have been drastically different than what were anticipated and or we received additional funds to cover some things. That's my impression of, of the last two years. Maybe that's not accurate, but.
I wouldn't rely on the four point seven going forward because it's such an unusual year and the same the year before. I, I'll have to do a bit of research. I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Don't know why, why things were, were kind of headed downward and then the last couple of years we've shot up.
So this two point four, what I, when I did, I said I did three percent. Kind of a simple answer. I took three percent cubed on this, on these expenses. So kind of ignoring these years, I wanted to see if I took last year three percent versus this one at, call it nine percent. And and I took the higher. They were actually pretty close. And then I, I went up there from there on the expenses. And in the new revenue that I put in on property taxes covers it, of course. I'll have to see like, so is, is two million the number we should expect when, when the final numbers come in each year? Or I see what you're saying is, is it gonna keep going down? I don't, I don't see that because I did go use every account number. I don't, I'll have to see what happened from the four point three down to the two point one.
I, I guess that's what troubles me somewhat is the last two years seem to be somewhat unusual or outliers.
Right.
And, and the previous trend was, was down to maybe a little bit flat there just a few years ago. And I'm wondering if, does that trend start to revert for some reason or not?
Yeah, I'll have to see if, you know, some of this was before I got here, but they may have spent more out of maintenance and expense on projects instead of moving it to capital and doing it that way. I, I try to move the ones that are unusual that aren't an every year thing.
Yeah, Dan, I think it's a good question, but Jim, if you flipped to this slide right before this, I, I guess, as I was looking through this, I, I thought that was related to those non-operating transfers, but that might not be a good assumption.
Because yeah, it's, it's really the first column that is graphed. The surplus. So on the, on this.
So that, that probably is not a good assumption then. Okay. I, I don't think I read that correctly. Okay.
It's, it's a factor that goes into the fund balance. So I'll, I'll get some more detail on what happened between, I guess FY fifteen and FY seventeen and eighteen.
Okay. I appreciate that. And if, if we could go to the slide major changes to FY twenty two to twenty third, FY thirty assumptions under the new expenditures. Yeah, that, that one there. Yeah. So listing costs of full day kindergarten at three point five million, am I, am I reading that correctly?
That's for eight years though.
That's for eight years. Okay.
Twenty two to thirty. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Now I'm understanding that better. I, I, it all clicked into place as soon as you said that. Thanks, Joel.
You're welcome. No, I had the same question and then I realized how it had been calculated out.
Okay, I'll work on getting us more comfortable with the change in those previous years. Any other questions on this?
So just for, maybe for clarification, and I just want to make sure I'm remembering some of our like personal finance questions correctly. Slide eight, ten, I think is like your middle, like the no central Hauser campus one.
Yep.
That one, this is kind of that we do full day kindergarten, we add personnel, we don't do the major like eight million dollars in projects projection, right?
Well, three of that we already did, but the five and a half million and.
Right. Okay. So just, well, or the that would be, okay. So that's the, oh yeah, you're right. Okay. The Blythe auditorium stuff is not included in these projections. That right? Okay. So this would be all the personnel stuff, including full day kindergarten, but not doing the major capital improvements. That's what this would look like. So I think I just wanted to call that out because the capital improvements, we're still working through like what that design's even going to look like and what kind of cost that's actually going to be. So as we continue to evaluate that as a facilities improvement, if we did all the personnel stuff and the staff oriented, you know, needs of the district, this is, this, this is that version of no other major capital improvement projects.
Right.
Yeah. We have a lot of stuff going on here, so I just wanted to call that out.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, thanks.
Thanks, Jim. All right. Before we move to the facilities committee, I let me note the, the clock here. We are at ten oh seven. I, I had a conversation with, with, well, separate conversations with Martha and Stephanie prior to the meeting, seeing, seeing our agenda was, was, was action packed here tonight. I, I, I think it might be possible for us to move the press policy discussion until March.
Yeah, I'm struggling a little bit. I'm tired. I, I don't mean, I'm trying not to be.
It's definitely, you know, we've, we've all worked a full day and it's getting kind of late. So.
Come on, I really wanted to talk about those policies. Can we?
I, you know, as much as I'd like to see the disco ball come down for, for every, you know, that's the policy committee. That's the symbol is the disco ball.
Is there not, were there not due till like March thirtieth, I believe is the day. So we have yeah, even the February sixteenth and or the March cow.
Yeah, I might propose that we just sort of shift everything, right? We could get it onto the February sixteenth board and March cow. We could even make, make March cow a special meaning to take action on approving policies if we needed to. So I think we could for sure shift our timeline on all the policies with the goal of having them approved by the end of March, as you said, Stephanie. Joel, I would love if we could touch on these MOUs. I don't think they're particularly complicated and that they're all summer maintenance projects, but we would ideally want those approved at the February board meeting. And I would hate to ask for approval without some opportunity to do a quick
or maybe. No, I was, I was personally, Danny, they're going to ask for breaks so that I can avoid this dog barking at me or your plan is much better. In front of, in this board packet, there are four MOUs from DLA. They involve the Ames roof and masonry repairs, Blythe and Hollywood, a little bit of roof and masonry there as well. Then the water line at Central. And then finally, the Central and Hauser roof, some minor roof work, and then mostly the building envelopes, i.e. the walls, the masonry walls. All of these look, DLAs prices look reasonable. And we can come back if you've got questions.
So one thing I, I had thought about with the Ames roof, I remember there was a neighbor who had asked us about putting up some kind of screen or something to the, to the one air conditioning unit.
He did, and we, we broached that topic briefly with Ramesh. And right now we're not pursuing that simply because it would require additional structural work on that roof, which is that's, again, we're opening up an older building. So I don't know that that's really the smartest thing to do at this point.
We can't just, like a basic, like you can't just put a screen around it. Like you would need structural supports for that.
You need to mount it to the roof and then you're going to get into structural loading primarily wood or sorry, primarily wind loading, which gets rather interesting because they have to start considering the, the worst possible event.
Yeah.
Um,
I didn't think about that.
We can, we have a meeting. Sorry, this is going to be a problem in a minute here. We have a meeting at the beginning of March, so we'll broach that topic with DLA, Dan. And at least get a better opinion from, we can ask DLA structural engineer to do some back of the envelope calculations or assessments as to what really is the implication of a screen.
Yeah, would that affect the integrity of the roof? Are you attaching it directly to the roof?
That's why it becomes a structural issue. You can't just set it down.
If it's just aesthetic, I I don't know.
It is just aesthetic. It's not necessary for the functioning of the roof. I at this point, I'm not in favor of it because it adds yet another element that but we we will, Martha, if you're all right with that, we'll ask DLA to have their their people.
Yeah.
Give us an opinion on it.
Great.
And so this roof is end of life, then I assume that that's
Yes, we 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 knew that with the way all these roofs are, they're in basically big sections. And so the portion of the Ames roof is original or it's on the original building and not the the addition, obviously. And then we had, we had talked about the cost of this before, why Ames was a little bit more, and that's because there's also a parapet or raised portion around the roof that needs some work as well. So it's not just a simple flat roof like on your house.
How old is that roof?
I would have to go back and look at the the condition assessment report. I don't know offhand.
More than twenty years or
I I believe so. But I'll I'll, Jim and I'll check the records and find out.
Forgive me if this is a dumb question. I'm I'm tired, but the central water line, is that something that's in the front of the school or something that would be addressed in the event that there was a Hauser central expansion? Or is it, I think I remember Ramesh saying it's fairly you know, if not urgent, but important. And so I don't want to necessarily tie it to an expansion, but can you give me a two minute summary?
Yeah, me and Joel.
I keep bumping things. I apologize. Thank you, Wesley.
Don't worry about it.
I'm holding her with one hand and then we're struggling here. The existing water, it's a good question, Sherry. The existing water line comes off Woodside and goes between the church building and Central. So it's in that alley.
Yeah, in between. Okay.
Yes, and it is definitely at its end of life. It had a break earlier this year, and the breakage was one that indicates it's a long, it's along the line of the pipe, which is typical of something that's at the end of its life.
Yeah, I thought that's what he had said. I just couldn't remember where it was. And thank you.
And so the new, the new main would be put through the parking lot, and that's essentially a trench out to Aiken side, but that's minimal. The real extra cost for not doing it with future improvement is the asphalt. The rest of the construction would have to be done no matter what.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
You know, like we, if I remember correctly, I think we touched on that last meeting, because now that you say that, I think I remember saying, so we're going to have to dig up the parking lot and then repaint it and then dig it up again and then because like, I think what did, I think you said like the break was sort of the the catalyst of like, we can't delay it anymore because the the timeline of our central Hauser improvement isn't going to be in line with what we're going to be required to do to fix that or something. Is that
Right. No, that's what I was thinking. Yeah.
We we had discussed it, and at this point, the the brakes indicate that there is a lot more risk than we should be taking on.
Yeah.
And with with regards to to wasted improvements, what you're wasting is essentially a three or four foot wide patch of asphalt that you're putting back that will be dug up in the future. You're not digging up the Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I know, Joel, I was just gonna say, I know that we would vote on this then at February sixteenth. Is there any sense of objections to these? Again, these are pretty much more straightforward than a lot of our, you know, these are not major capital improvements. This is maintenance work.
They're also not, I mean, they're they're real money, but they're not huge money in terms of some of the other work we've had them do.
Well, and I'd rather not pay for something when something goes very, very wrong if we didn't replace it in time because that always costs triple what you paid now. So
Yeah, yeah. I personally did not have any objections from what I read or or any substantial questions that would probably sway my mind. So as of right now, I I don't have any core objections to any of these.
I don't either.
None on my part.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Joel. And so is everyone okay if if we table the press policy discussion for this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
But maybe I might suggest, I think we always go in the same committee order. Maybe we put policy committee at the top of the list for next
Will be nice and fresh for Stephanie and then
Yeah, exactly.
You won't save the, you won't save the best for last. That's And I know we do have, I just also want to thank Angela. We'll be helping out with one of the policies, in particular, the six sixty curricular updates. So she has a maybe presentation isn't the right word, but we'll be able to elaborate on that specific one, which I know is pretty hefty.
I think having her do it early is probably nicer to her rather than have her wait around to talk about it.
Yeah. So, yes, I'm fine. I'm, Dan, you and I spoke, and yeah, I'm in total agreement. So
All right. Thanks, Stephanie. Definitely appreciate it. All right. So then that would bring us back to public comment. Has there been any additional public comments?
Ah, yes, there has. I forwarded that to you.
You did? Okay, let me see. Okay, so I have one from Erica Zumas.
Yes. Let me check.
Or is it something else? Because I I don't know that that's public comment.
Let me check to see. That would be Julie Strilo.
Julie Strilo. I don't know that I have that yet. Let me see. That was forwarded
Julie Strilo.
That was forwarded to my I I don't think I have that yet.
Okay.
Did that, where did that go? Let me see.
Dan, could we just ask Kathy to read it?
Okay, sure. Absolutely.
Okay. They apologized if it didn't get read because it came after the seven seven o'clock hour. Hello, we are parents of two children under five in the Hollywood area of Brookfield. We realize this comment may not be read as we are sending it after seven PM. Thank you for the work put into all day kindergarten research. We are two working parents who fully support the move to full day for our children and this community. We are social workers and value of the role of public education in shaping our young people, including the social emotional needs that full day kindergarten can meet for five and six year olds. Best, Julia Strilo and Ari Bernstein.
All right. Thank you, Kathy.
You are welcome. And that is all that I have.
Okay, great. All right. And then I will read out future meeting dates, February sixteenth, twenty twenty two, regular business meeting, seven PM in the multipurpose room of Ames barring another snow day. The board will enter into closed session at six fifteen PM if necessary and return to open session at seven PM. March second, twenty twenty two is committee of the whole, seven PM in the multipurpose room of Ames. March sixteenth is a regular business meeting, seven PM in the multipurpose room of Ames. Board will enter into closed session at six fifteen PM if necessary and return to open session at seven. And if there is nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.